Good evening. We have reconvened from closed session, and I would like to make the following announcement. By a 5-2-0 vote, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney’s Office to defend the case of Tran versus the City of Elk Grove and all as identified by the case number on the City Council meeting agenda. And with that, we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:00 p.m. And that brings us to our regular meeting. At this time, I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, August 28, 2024. The time is 6:00 p.m. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This may be the Elk Grove City Council be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight’s meeting replays will be on Friday, August 30 at 1:00 p.m. And Sunday, September 1 at 6:00 p.m. On Channel 14, previous meetings can be viewed online at www.elkrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber and provided to our deputy city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, I will move into the roll call. And for the roll call, I will start with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Spies.
Present.
Councilmember Soen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brewer.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. All right, thank you. Next up is our land acknowledgement. Would the Vice Mayor please read that?
Thank you, Mayor. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove’s first inhabitants, the Plains Mewoc, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endured because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
All right, thank you. Next up is our pledge of allegiance. Would Councilmember Robles please help lead us?
Hands over heart, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please join us for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Next up is our approval of the agenda. May I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next up, Clerk.
Under Section 3, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda. And moving right ahead, under Section 4, our presentations and announcements, there are no presentation items on the regular agenda, which will take us direct to public comment, Section 5 of our agenda.
All right.
And we just note, yeah, we don’t have anyone signed up yet, but just for members of the public, this would be the opportunity to get speaker cards in for general public comment.
All right, thank you. At this time, I’ll open up public comment opportunity.
I think we have one gentleman who—
Yes, sir.
Just please come forward, sir, and just announce your name. We can take your card as you come on up. If you can hand that over to Julie, that would be great.
Ronnie Jones.
Ronnie Jones.
Ronnie or—
Ronnie Harland.
All right, sir, you’re up.
How you guys doing? It’s an honor to be here with such distinguished folks. I would like to talk about affordable housing in Elk Grove that really isn’t affordable. I have a niece that signed up for the Avery Gardens probably 10 years ago. She was number three on the list. She got pulled right away. For some reason, they kept pushing her back. Eight years later, after they told her she was number three, she brought in her deposit, all of that stuff, went through the process, they gave her deposit back. Some person at Avery Garden was bringing their friends in, and she got pushed off. So eight years later—I think this is three years ago—she finally got into the Avery Gardens, but she got in at 40%. Should’ve got in at 30%, but if she didn’t take 40%, she’d be still homeless. Now, her rent is going up 100 and something bucks a year. No longer affordable if the rent keeps going up. Now, if this is a private person renting, I get it. But when these units—when these buildings are subsidized by the City of Elk Grove, something has to be done, because if it go—her next rent increase, she’s going to be homeless. So I don’t know what you do about that. I would think that you guys should consider emergency site-based Section 8 to help folks like that, because she’s a single mother, she’s—she gets social—you know, she gets Social Security, and she works. And she can’t make ends meet, and she’ll never make ends meet the way the system is On another note, most of the homes that are being bought in Sacramento and Elk Grove aren’t being bought by individual families, they’re being bought by corporations. I’m calling on you guys to pass a ordinance in Elk Grove banning corporations from buying single-family homes. It’s disproportionately pushing up prices for renters here. So we have folks who are getting pushed out of the Bay Area coming here, pushing these rents up, and the corporations are buying all the houses, and they’re setting the market. So they’re setting the market based on getting profits. It’s a corporation, I get it, we should cut that out. We should ban it. I know that, you know, they donate money and all of that stuff, but this is a people thing. So I’m not sure if you guys understand how many people are right there to being homeless. Folks like me, who were fortunate enough to buy a long time ago, pay off their houses, doesn’t impact us like that. But somebody like my niece and the younger folks coming up, and folks who are working gig jobs, and just any—any—just the regular folks, they having a hard time. You guys could be the progressive group that says, “We’re not going to allow that in Elk Grove.” And then you guys should form a commission to really study affordable housing. And I think that’s my time.
Thank you, sir. On your first item, can we connect you with Sarah? Vaughn?
Oh, okay.
And then feel free to reach out to me, I’d love to continue this conversation.
Well, thank you kindly, and thank you guys for allowing me.
All right. I do not have anyone else signed up to speak. I will close public comment, and that will take us over to our City Manager’s report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Jason Berman, the City Manager. Several items reported this evening. First of all, City officials joined representatives from Crown Castle earlier today at District 56 to commemorate the installation of 180 new small cell nodes and 40 miles of fiber-optic cable in the city using the Rapid Connect deployment method. By embracing this cutting-edge technology, we’ve given our city new connections at a fraction of the time and minimal impact to our local residents. The local Elk Grove 101, this is our second cohort started a week ago. Our second session was just last night. We have nearly 50 residents who signed up. The mayor and the vice mayor were there on the first evening and had a great thing. We even had two people that graduated from the first cohort who spoke about their experiences in the first round, so it was really, really great to see. And so it’s a great, wonderful new program. We’re looking to do it again in early 25, but just a shout-out to all of our staff and our elected officials for supporting this program, and encourage future members of our community to sign up for future classes, so it’s really a great thing. Let’s see. Residents can learn how to borrow or buy an e-bike. The Council approved this program, our vouchers and our lending library. We’re getting ready to do a kickoff on September 3 at 10:00 a.m. at Laguna Gateway Shopping Center, which is at the corner of Laguna and Big Horn Boulevard. We’re going to share details about the two new programs, offer the chance to test ride an e-bike, can chat with local vendors. The rally is hosted by the city in partnership with Secog, so looking forward to that. I know a big e-bike advocate, Councilmember Soen, will be there kicking that thing off for us, so looking forward to that. With the hiring of the new veterinarian at the animal shelter, we are now able to resume trap-neuter-return TNR services for cats in Elk Grove beginning September 3. The TNR is the humane approach to addressing community cat populations by having community cats spayed, neutered, vaccinated when appropriate, and ear tipped and returned into the same area in which they were trapped. We’re bringing back a silent disco to Old Town Plaza next Friday, September 6, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Musical experience encourages dancing in headphones with your family, friends, and neighbors. The night is free for all ages, food and drink will be available for purchase. And finally, residents can get a taste of diversity and great deals during our Diversity Dining Week, September 6 through the 15th. Exclusive meals, discounts, and deals will be offered at a wide variety of restaurants in Elk Grove. Sign up for free, mobile pass on the Explore Elk Grove website. And that concludes my report. I’m happy to answer any questions the Council might have.
Thank you for your report. Any questions, comments? Councilmember Soen?
Thank you, Mayor. Jason, for the small cell nodes, is there any report out from Crown Castle or any—or our providers that where we might feel or, you know, notice a significant difference?
We asked that today. So they’re going to give us a map, we get an indication of— They’re still actually doing some installs, so it’s not totally built out yet, but over the course of the next few weeks, they’ll have that. Primarily, it’s—right now, it’s for Verizon customers that would see the difference. They are working on T-Mobile and AT&amp;T, hopefully down the line will sign on as well, but right now, it’ll be mostly Verizon. And we’re hopeful that it’ll make a difference in some areas that have experienced some bad cell service, including around District 56, including the new—the Ridge Shopping Center, and Glenbrook, and other places like that, we’ve had some concerns. So we won’t know until it’s all fully deployed, but the hope is that that will definitely help in some of those areas, as well as other areas of the city will get faster cell connection, so it’ll be 5G throughout the areas that they have deployed, so.
All right, great. Look forward to the report.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I want to thank you for the information on the TNR, the schedule resuming on September 3, or in this case, next week. Starting to see a good number of people who are out there doing the collection, so just knowing that the vet—that we have a veterinarian, that means help is already here, help is on the way. I’m very excited for that news coming down the pipeline. I think that makes a lot of folks in our TNR community happy that that is taking place. So, no, thank you for that.
And just to be clear, we have been doing TNR services, we’ve been contracting with other facilities in order to do that, but it’s been more limited, because there’s just hard-finding space. And so—and we’ve used some grant funds that we received from the state in order to do that, but now having the capability of doing it in-house will allow us to do even more, so.
Will we still maintain our partnerships with the other folks that have been doing it up to this point?
Where needed, yeah. We can absolutely continue to do that, supplement what we’re doing, it just depends on the lot of—the, again, the funding for the contract work we have been doing had been through some grant work, so I’m not sure what the current status of that, how much money we have left to spend on that, but we’ll utilize, you know, whatever resources we have available to be able to supplement that.
Good deal. Thank you so much.
Seeing no other questions or comments, we’ll move on. Next item is our consent calendar items. At this time, I will open up public comment. Nobody has signed up to speak on this, I’ll close public comment and look for approval of consent.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that takes us to item 8.1.
That’ll be a public hearing to consider arnance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Chapters 23.56 and 23.100 regarding residential lighting standards.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Cara Killingsworth, and I’ll be presenting to you the text amendments for the residential lighting standards. Earlier this year, Planning Commission requested that staff bring back some information on the existing standards for the lighting standards for the Elk Grove Municipal Code of Chapter 23.56. And staff brought a presentation of other jurisdictions, other examples, as well as the current standards, which currently are just for multifamily and commercial zones. And so there are no regulations for residential, agriculture residential, two-unit zones. So after that, staff brought back text amendments and suggestions, and the Planning Commission voted for one to recommend approval of the ordinance for these text amendments to the City Council. So those changes include Chapter 23.56. Currently, there is 23.56.040, but right now, that is prohibited lighting, and that’s going to be moved to the new section of 23.56.50. The new 23.56.040 will be for the residential units, two-unit, single-family, and it will include attached exterior lighting and freestanding exterior lighting and exemptions for exterior lighting. Again, this is all for exterior lighting, not interior. All the other sections of the chapter will remain as is. And there will be a new definition for full cutoff. The full cutoff will show that there’s no lighting above 90 degrees, so you have a shielding and a light bulb, and just make sure that the light does not go exceed that So to go more in detail, so the single unit, again, would be for residential and agriculture residential zones, and the new language would be for attached exterior lighting that for primary and accessory structures, they don’t see the roof—the eve of the roof of the building, and as well as they are fully cut off, shielded, and they don’t exceed 1,600 lumens. And just to give you a little background, 1,600 lumens equals 100 watts. So a little more details of freestanding lighting. So there’s two sections. So if you have a freestanding exterior lighting that goes up to 12 feet, that’ll be permitted with a building permit, but it has to be fully cut off, not exceed the 1,600 lumens, and just a building permit would be okay. After that, if someone wants to have a 12-foot to 20-foot max lighting exterior fixture, they would have to submit a minor design review to the Planning Division for review, which would include a photometric plan, and as well as not exceed the 1,600 lumens, full cutoff, and they would have an automatic device that would turn off between 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. Exemptions include temporary lighting, so any lighting for seasonal decoration, if you have it up for 90 consecutive days, doesn’t need any type of permit, or you’re just allowed to have it. Low-voightage landscaping lighting is allowed, outdoor string lighting, and then any lighting that’s exterior that was legally approved by a building permit is exempt prior to the effective date of this standard if approved. And as mentioned earlier, so the prohibited section would be just changed from one section to another, and there was new language added. So for residential development, no lighting should be blinking or flashing. Again, exterior temporary lighting is allowed for seasonal decoration. And then the other one is accent eve lighting that’s underneath the source of the roof. As long as you don’t see it from the public right-of-way, we thought that could be something Staff finds that the text amendments are exempt from CEQA as the changes would not create new or more restrictive lighting—as they do create more restrictive lighting for single-unit and two-unit residential development, they protect the nighttime view and prevent any light pollution. And with that, staff recommends that the City Council conduct a public hearing and introduce and waive the full reading of the ordinance amending the Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 23.56 and 23.100, for the residential lighting standards. And if you have any questions, feel free to let me know. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your report. At this time, I will open up public comment. No one has signed up to speak on this, I’ll close public comment and declare the public hearing is closed. And I’ll start to the left. Any questions, comments? Councilmember Soen, Vice Mayor?
No questions.
Anyone to my right? All right, I’ll look for a motion then.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, next item, please.
Take us to Section 9, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, and that first being item 9.1, receive information, consider an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 9.38, related to unlawful camping.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I’m Captain Brian Shoff. I oversee our Community Resources Bureau, which is the division that oversees our homeless outreach team. In the audience, I have one of our homeless outreach officers, Sarah Depay, and she’s—if you have questions that are operational, I’ll bring her up here after we’re all done. But we’re here to present the Council with a proposed update to the encampment ordinance for the City of Elk Grove. I think it’s important to get to the background, or go through the background of how we ended up here. Back in 2018, the 9th District ruled on a case that challenged camping ordinances within jurisdictions. That ruling drastically limited the law enforcement ability to handle homeless encampment complaints. Since that decision, our state and our city has experienced an increase in encampments. Encampments have adversely affected our community, our infrastructure, such as bridges and flood control areas, and our nature areas, such as trash and waste in our creeks and watershed areas. These encampments have been—have taken significant amount of public resources to address health and safety issues, remove refuse, repair damages, infrastructure, and then to further deter those encampments from coming back. It’s important to note that our current ordinance model is modeled after the Boise decision, so that means that a lot of those restrictions that were in that decision were restricted by. So in June of this year, the Supreme Court heard the case of Grants Pass versus Johnson, and essentially reversed the Boise decision. And so now we’re back to the point where we can enforce some of those encampment issues and handle some of the complaints that we’re having. In addition, a month later, the governor issued Order Number N-1-24, and it encourages local jurisdictions to address encampments and homelessness, to develop policies with the urgency that this issue demands. Those are his words, not mine. So I’d be remiss, though, if we didn’t really focus on some of the things—the service end that we developed over this long period of time. As we went through these decisions, and Martin versus Boise started in 2009, and so we’ve known that something was coming. Our city has done an amazing job at being compassionate and developing a service-based response to homelessness and encampments. The work that our people do every day is, you know, is felt by that. It’s really—it really demonstrates our compassion as a city. So this ordinance update doesn’t erase any of that, and I want to kind of go through some of the compassionate and collaborative approaches that we have. Of course, enforcement is one aspect, but for us, and one of the collaboration—the collaborative efforts that we’re doing is through the DA’s office and their court program. And the court program is the Chronic Offender Rehabilitation Effort, and this is really focused on those prolific offenders that we—that are service-resistant, and that—for us, they would be our repeat calls of homeless encampments that we haven’t been able to move. They are people that are causing disturbances, they’re having, you know, large debris areas and trash, and so these are the people that generate a lot of complaints for us. And so the court program essentially allows us, once we hit 10 citations for that individual, to then refer them to the District Attorney’s Office Court Program for prosecution. And our hope through that is to achieve the courtroom mandates for those services. So we’re—you know, instead of offering the services and having people voluntarily go into them, this is a compulsory method for getting them into the services. And these are services like mental health and, you know, addiction services and financial services for some, and those type of things. So our regional cooperation, I’m very proud to say, one of our officers, our homeless outreach team, Shasta Devlin, started a regional approach, and they meet right here in this council chambers, and she brings in our neighboring agencies and makes sure that we’re collaborating with our—all of our jurisdictions around us, so that we are addressing the problem and not just displacing it. And so we’re really proud of our team for starting that, for starting that collaboration. And then within the city, Hart has three homes, that they are transitional housing, and so we’re utilizing them. Our homeless navigators, we have two of them now, and they are—they work magic with finding those services that are specific to the need of the person that they’re dealing with. So all of these things are the compassion—none of these things are going to stop, right? It’s compassionate approach, and we’re collaborative. And I’d be remiss if I didn’t mention that our commitment to the shelter—last year’s winter shelter was a success. We saw a lot of success stories out of that, and our commitment to provide that to our population, where there’s a referral process, and it’s really dealing with the people that call Elk Grove home, but they don’t have a home here, or they have some sort of connection to Elk Grove. And so we’re going to continue that. Which brings us to the recommendation. So our recommendation is that we amend the current ordinance to adopt a ban on camping in the City of Elk Grove. And that would extend to all public right-of-ways, driveways, you know, essentially everywhere that’s public land. That is consistent with what our neighboring agencies are doing, it’s consistent with the Grants Pass decision. It will not change how we safeguard those individuals’ property. It will change our ability and our flexibility to do those cleanup efforts. Right now, it’s a 72-hour notice, we’re looking to move that back to 24 hours, so that we can effectively get into those areas and clean up those waterways, those critical infrastructures that do get kind of messed up through that process. However, in that section, in that EGMC code, it will not change our 90-day holding of personal property, safeguarding it, allowing these people time and resources to come get their property and move them to a safe place for them. It’s in cooperation with the objectives that the governor’s talked about, and it improves the overall service approach of our officers out there who are dealing with our chronic problems. Essentially, the changes are fairly minor, but they’re huge in the aspect that the Boise decision was about time and place and what we could enforce, and this is essentially —the US Supreme Court says, “No, it can be enforced in the jurisdiction in total.” So the exemptions that come with this, there is one exemption, the City Manager, for like some of our community groups that have an overnight, not going to affect them, we’re just—we’re going to have them provide some sort of evidence of adequate insurance, and the City Manager can offer that exemption. So with that, we’d—I’m happy to take any questions from you.
Thank you, Captain. Let’s see, at this time, I will open up public comment opportunity. I do not have anyone signed up to speak— I do not have anyone signed up to speak. I'll go ahead and close public comment opportunity. I do have a question before I turn it over to my colleagues. As it relates to, we know that similar ordinances are being looked at statewide in our region. How are we coordinating for the encroachment, say, on our city limits from Sacramento and other communities? You mentioned a little bit about some coordination. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Absolutely. That collaborative effort, and I'm going to have Sarah, you want to come up here? Because she does this every day. So I'll have her probably address some of your questions and add to where I'm missing. But that collaboration that, that we've developed, we get a forewarning from our neighboring agencies, hey, this is going to happen. We actually are going out in, is it September 3rd?
Yeah, 3rd and 4th.
3rd and 4th. With the Sheriff's Department on our, on our northern border. And that way, we'll have our homeless navigators communicating with their homeless navigators, our homeless outreach team communicating with their homeless outreach team as they enforce some laws and do some cleanup along that area. We're making sure that the people that need the services from the county are getting them, and, and that if there, if there are some of our people that need services, they're, they're being provided those services as well. That's that collaborative effort. And there's a, there's a continued collaboration. I'll add to that.
Talking with the Sacramento Police Department, they also told us if we, we get their unhoused, as they're doing their zero tolerance, to send them back into the city and have them call 311 to reach their navigators, or 211 to get them on a housing list.
Thank you for that. I'm going to go ahead and start with Councilmember Robles.
Thank you, Cap, for the briefing that you gave. And I really just, I'm so thankful that we're proactive in trying to solve this issue while many just kind of shy away from it. Thank you for creating that inter-agency collaboration. It's definitely good when folks are communicating together. So super thankful for that and happy to see that we're, as a city, we're moving forward. And thank you for approaching in a humanistic standpoint of you, for, for touching people. You're the first face that they see and super thankful for that.
Councilmember Spies? I didn't forget your name.
So, you know, I'm, I'm reminded again of something that a, a local pastor here told me recently is that, you know, you can, you can solve some problems, but other problems you have to manage, right? This is, this is an issue that unfortunately, the, the city of Elk Grove doesn't hold the entire solution, but we certainly are responsible to manage it. And I thank you very much for showing the different aspects of how we are trying to manage it. I think there's another item on there that maybe we should have had on there as well is that we have an element with Measure E that we're trying to prevent homelessness as well, right?
Correct.
We're trying to, trying to backstop people from falling into that homelessness. So, but I, I think I really appreciate, and folks really need to understand that this is really just one aspect of the full spectrum that we're trying to do to, to manage homelessness here in Elk Grove. And so I, I appreciate, of course, all of your work. It's certainly not difficult. No one likes to have to be on the enforcement side. Well, I guess maybe all of you enjoy being on the enforcement side. But I guess the point is, no one, we, we are a city that has compassion. We are a city that wants to help people. And sometimes having to make the tough decisions for other people can be difficult, right? But I appreciate the recommendations that you have and looking forward to the next time we talk on this issue again. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I want to thank you for the, I want to thank you for the report and the overview because I think we have, we have, we have situations where we do come across people who need help. The question is, are we able to help them immediately? Or can we get them on a waitlist? And even then, the waitlist is, is out of all of our control because that's based on a heavy demand that exists within the city and the county. Anything that we can do to help get people into a place of safety, as a building block to get them back on the road, to getting back on their feet is definitely commendable. This is definitely not one of the easier issues to, to come across, but this is something that, that has to be done because we have to do what we can to help our, our fellow man and woman out. Homelessness is a very serious issue, and anything that we can do to help people get, get on their feet again, fighting whatever demons they're, they're fighting with, but really doing our part to help them out is very humane and definitely moving towards that, that the right goals and moving in the right direction. So I definitely appreciate what's, what's before us tonight because it's, it's definitely, definitely needed. Thank you.
Councilmember Suen?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, agree with all the comments my colleagues mentioned or said, and just want to reiterate our gratefulness to how you, the PD captain, and Sarah Yu, along with Sarah Bontrager, how you've handled the homelessness situation here in our city. And you mentioned compassion. And I think for those, you know, who might not be aware, since the beginning, you know, your officers have been out there building relationships with the population out there, getting to know them in, in hopes that one day they would accept help for services. So that's, we've discovered, like, that's a best practice that I think now is more commonly employed throughout the region, but you've been doing that here since the beginning. And so I really appreciate that. I like this ordinance that, you know, we're not going to have any city administrative fines associated with violations for, for encampments, although the, the courts can impose it, but that's, that's out of our hands. But at least here's a city, again, getting back to your, your comment about being compassionate. I think that's another way we've demonstrated that. And so we're, we're trying to get at, you know, they can't, the encampments themselves are the symptoms, right? We're trying to get at how we can get people housed and help. And so I think you spoke to earlier, the, those strategies of, of, you know, 10 times before we have to employ more, more restrictive means through the, through the DA. So I, I agree with my colleagues. I think this is a very compassionate approach. And at the same time, we're ensuring that the safety of our residents and the homeless population. Last year, these picture, these pictures that you show, there was one where, under the bridge, and there was one where the encampments or the, the encampment mater, a lot of the camps underneath the bridge was just before a flood occurred. And had we not cleaned that out, all of people's belongings would have been washed away. And so it, it's, it's an illustration of, of why it's important that we need to keep these, these floodways clear. But again, at the same time, trying to find people help in getting them into housing. So again, thank you and wholeheartedly support this proposal. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I want to thank my colleagues for your thoughtful comments, excellent remarks from everybody. I really appreciated, Councilmember Spies, that this is really the lens of managing the homelessness issue and really doing that through our service-based response. So I want to thank you and the entire team because we do, like Councilmember Suen said, we do have a history of that compassionate response. And proud to say that I know that all of you know their names. That's a big deal. That's a person. And so that human dignity that you all showcase is, is quite tremendous. You know, I think that this, we're, we're here not only because of a Supreme Court decision, but it's our communities. It's not only the city of Elk Grove, but the region and the entire state. And so we all needed to step up, and I'm glad that the governor recognized that and issued an executive order to that, to that end. But I'm also, you know, just realistically, we know that this is, you know, when it comes to the enforcement side of the house, this isn't going to fix the homelessness issue. We have, I'm looking forward to our future presentation when it comes to our year-round sanctuary, if you will, shelter. That will definitely be one of our many solutions that we're looking at. Affordable housing, you know, those that need treatment should get treatment. And then there'll be some that just want to be there. And so having a multi-pronged approach is, is what's needed. And I'm happy to see that we have the tools that we need to, not only as a city, but the entire region. So I also really appreciate the coordination that's taking place. You know, that, that, that's a big deal because we don't want to be, you know, it can't be one city's burden at the expense of another and vice versa. So that, to that effect, that we're, that we're working together and collaborating. I, I definitely appreciate the extra work that's being done. So with that, I too support this, so I will look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Question is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, please.
That'll be Item 9.2, which is to receive a presentation on illegal fireworks activity and enforcement efforts.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. My name is Jose Mendez. I'm your code enforcement manager. I'm accompanied tonight with Lieutenant Mendaleno with the Elk Grove Police Department. The topic tonight is on illegal fireworks and enforcement efforts that went up to, to address the issue leading up to the Fourth of July and on the Fourth of July. A little background on illegal fireworks. Over the last couple of years, the city of Elk Grove has experienced extensive calls for service regarding the use of illegal fireworks. Council directed staff to increase enforcement efforts as a result of growing concerns. To assist with those increased enforcement efforts, in April of this year, council adopted revisions to Chapter 17.06. Two primary components of those revisions that I want to discuss in my presentation include Section 17.06.035, host liability, that is providing staff the ability to cite a host who permits or fails to prevent any discharge of dangerous fireworks on their property, sidewalk, or street. It also increased fines to $1,000 for each violation. That's $1,000 for each single violate, each single dangerous firework that is in possession or that is utilized. I'm sorry, discharged. Little additional background here. So illegal fireworks do not carry the safe and sane seal from the California State Fire Marshal. Illegal fireworks include skyrockets, bottle rockets, aerial shells, firecrackers, and roman candles, among many more. These are the more common ones that we observed as we patrolled the city on the Fourth. We're going to show you a, a small snippet, a video of what we observed demonstrating the use of these skyrockets, bottle rockets, and aerial shells. So there's three primary components to our enforcement approach. We spent a lot of time and resources with education and outreach. We wanted to ensure that residents in Elk Grove understood and knew that they could be held accountable for the use of illegal fireworks. We, we spent a lot of time ensuring that the messaging focused on the increase of fines to $1,000 per firework. We also focused on and emphasized the fact that property owners could be cited if they were not, if they didn't stop the activity. On June 29th, we also had an amnesty day, and I will show you the results of that here in a bit. And then Lieutenant Mendaleno will go over the enforcement efforts and the results of that. Tremendous thank you to our Public Affairs Office for all the media outreach that they conducted. Again, the focus was to ensure that residents understood and knew that the fines were increased to $1,000 and that property owners could be held accountable. We utilized social media channels. Messaging was also provided on electronic, electronic signs located throughout the city facilities. Lieutenant Lance with the CCSD Fire Department and myself recorded a podcast informing residents of the amendments and consequences related to illegal fireworks. And there was also an email blast newsletter and letters that were sent to residents in Elk Grove. I would say that we were pretty successful with our amnesty program. We collected 3,000 illegal fireworks. In that 3,000 collection, or 300 bottle rockets, eight roman candles, and seven homemade explosive fireworks. I will let Lieutenant Mendaleno take over now.
Thank you, Jose. This slide right here is a representation of the calls for service on the, between, or on July 4, 2023 versus this year in July 2024. 2023 is in blue, 2024 is in red. And the first two columns represent the 911 emergency calls, and the second two columns represent the non-emergency calls to dispatch. There was a total of 562 calls to both 911 emergency and the non-emergency line on the Fourth of July concerning illegal fireworks, to dispatch between 6:00 PM and midnight on July 4. So 911 calls and non-emergency calls increased by 50% from 2023 to 2024. On, on an average Friday night, the Elk, Elk Grove PD dispatch answers about 130 calls. 60 of those would be 911 emergency calls, and 70 would be non-emergency calls. So you can imagine the difference in the workload just on that one holiday. This year, we also, we also included the help of our police volunteers to help answer the non-emergency illegal firework calls so we could log the locations. And the plan is to have code enforcements and warning letters to those address, to those addresses in hopes of changing the behavior before next year. And of course, none of this success could be done without the collaboration between CSD Fire, our code enforcement, and the Police Department, and the City Council. The changing of the municipal code was very beneficial this year and really helped with enforcement. So from the PD side, we planned and coordinated the illegal fireworks operation, which included the use of our DFR program, also known as our drone first responder. The drones were dispatched from the Police Department campus and were able to fly overhead recording the use of the aerial illegal fireworks. Both code enforcement officers and CSD arson investigators were assigned to enforcement operations and assisted by responding to illegal firework calls for service and issue citations, along with taking reports of violations that, that were observed. The drone, the drone footage was later sent to code enforcement, who was able to visually tally the number of violations and issue citations to the homeowners of the locations identified. Code enforcement vehicles were equipped with Rexing 4 dash cams. I'll let Jose kind of explain what that Rex, our 4 is.
Sure. So we equipped our city vehicles with dash cams this year, mostly to assist with appeals. Oftentimes, folks want to contest that, our observations, and so to ensure that they understood what we saw and we were able to tie that, that particular person that was setting fireworks to a resident, we utilized dash cams to record that, that activity.
During the Fourth of July illegal fireworks operation, 19 property owners were issued a combined total of $240,000 in citations from using illegal fireworks in the city limits. The most expensive fine being $100,000 violation. I believe code enforcement stopped counting at 140 individual violations and settled with the $100,000 violation. A good example of this program working and the municipal code changing is, one of my off, one of the officers, actually sergeant with the, with the PD, actually called me the other day and said, a neighbor of that violator had actually called him and was saying, hey, I live with that neighbor and I know that violator, you know, the person that lit the fireworks, and he's on, I feel bad. I feel bad that he's got $100,000 fine. How can I help him? I have like $2,000 in my savings. Can I donate to his cause? So not only is, not only is the violator learning, but they're talking about it, right? Such an egregious fine that they're, they're talking, the community is talking. So it's, it is definitely making a difference. Right here is going to be a video. Let's see if I can get that started. There's no audio on this video, but an example, this is actually the house that had the $100,000 fine, and it's taken using our drones, drones over this. And what you can see is the danger of lighting the fireworks in the city. Now, these are going, going extremely high in the air. You can see all the homes down below. You can see the smoke showing the wind direction from the fireworks. And if you look closely, some of the ambers are actually landing on some of the people's houses. Fortunately, no, there were no fires from this and no one was injured from this, but it kind of shows the danger that people lighting these in the, in the neighborhoods, you know, how bad it can affect somebody's lifestyle, especially if it harmed people and/or lit somebody's house on fire. Now, here's, this part of the video shows the fireworks actually taken off. He actually had two pellets full of fireworks in front of his house. And to move those, he actually needed a pellet jack to actually move those into the road and off of the roadway. And if you're familiar with our actual, our sanctioned Fourth of July celebration at Elk Grove Park, you know they actually have a landing zone that is taken up by the four baseball fields and the parking lot south, the southern end of Elk Grove Park. So that's a huge area needed to actually light these fireworks. And this is a really dangerous example of what's going on in our neighborhood. But with the cooperation between CSD, the Police Department, and the code enforcement, we hope to continually reduce some of these fireworks. Strategy for next year, so for-
Strategy for next year. So Fourth of July landed on Thursday this year. It was still pretty busy. Uh, next year it will land on Friday, so we anticipate it will be even busier. Uh, regardless, we're going to continue our outreach and education to residents to ensure that they understand that illegal fireworks are illegal in city limits, the citation amounts, the fact that we can hold the property owners accountable. Uh, we're going to continue this and approaching this as a multi-agency approach, uh, in partnership with code, police, and fire. And then we are very excited about next year because next year we'll be adding a second drone to this process. Um, and it'll allow for full coverage of the city, hopefully to identify more property owners. The, the goal here is to stop the behavior, right? It's not the citations. It's ultimately to get the word out to ensure that, that this, this issue, it completely stops. Um, and but yet we will continue with citations and utilize our resources to the best of our ability. So we're here for any questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will open up public comment opportunity. Um, I think someone just turned in. Yep, there we go. Uh, Mr. Thompson.
Hi. I'm gonna try to avoid all the jokes that went through my head during the presentation. Um, so my only concern is around this time last year, um, I had brought up that I was down in the Bay Area, and I saw a big sign on the road that said, um, "All fireworks are illegal. Happy Fourth of July." And I cannot think of something more un-American than that, to be honest. So as far as like, uh, some sort of ordinance and fines and penalties, something like that for illegal fireworks, I get it. Totally understand it, totally respect it, appreciate the work you guys are doing. I just want to make sure that we are not crossing that line over into, as they do in many places, banning all the fireworks everywhere, all the time. I'm not a big fan of that. Fourth of July is like, well, Christmas is my Christmas. So Fourth of July is like a close second right there. And part of the things that I enjoyed growing up with were going down, buying the fireworks. Now, I grew up in North Idaho, so I was one of the illegal fireworks lighters, but, um, it's one, it's a, it's a big thing for my childhood. I took videos of my kids, um, watching the fireworks this year. I can't think of anything that will, brings me more joy than watching my kids go nuts when the fireworks are being lit. So I just want to make sure we are, while we are saying, hey, don't light off, you know, was it three thousand? I don't know, however many they lit, like three thousand fireworks, you know, over a residential area, totally get that. But I don't want us going in the opposite direction where you can't do it at all. So as long as we are staying on that side of the line, totally happy with what's going on here, and I appreciate the effort of the, uh, of the Police Department in here as his, uh, efforts to try to, try to bring that down a bit. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak, so I will close public comment opportunity. And you will see, Mr. Thompson, that the City Council does support safe and legal fireworks. Um, so with that, um, I, let's see, I will open it up for public, um, council comments and deliberations. I will start to the left. Did I leave you last time?
Uh, last night, I think it was last time to the right, but yeah.
Okay, go for it.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, well, just to, I guess, just to start where we left off, I agree with the, the speaker earlier. I mean, we, I think, um, I think all of us, but I'll speak, just speak for myself. It totally embrace safe and sane fireworks. It helps out our, our various nonprofits, and it's patriotic. So I wouldn't, uh, ever think of getting, moving away from that. Uh, I really appreciate the work that, uh, code enforcement, PD, CSD, all of you have done and worked together. That's, that's a, a lot of progress, even though we know there was a lot that was happening out there. My que, and, and it's glad to hear your opinion. It seems to be working. So I think as the word gets out, maybe next year it'll tame, get a little more tame. My question is, would it be, um, uh, kind of violating what, in terms of what we would want people to see by pu, posting this video on the, on our website to show what you all see through the drones so that people can actually realize, hey, it's dark out there, but you are, you know, you're under a spotlight when you're doing these things, and it's, it's clearly evident. Um, that might, um, help deter, uh, folks from, from doing it in the future if they realized how visible they are, and they're not under the, the guise of darkness, if you will. Does that hinder your operations by, by showing something like that?
No, I don't think that'll hinder our operations at all, and I think that's part of that education component of it. And you've really seen things from the drone's point of view. It usually helps people see like how much danger that you're putting your neighbors in, the houses, and especially, everybody's aware of all the fires that are going on over the several years. So I think that would be good education for the public, and maybe even put out like, that was an example of a large fine that that person was doing, and how it affects the community and the neighbors in there. But I, I also agree with the speaker there that, um, we don't need to go too far, but definitely make it safer for the kids and families in the neighborhood.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and if you could, you know, make it, uh, share, well, I'm sure all of us on our social media pages can post it too, and in terms of encouraging, uh, no illegal use of fireworks as well. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you for the report. Excellent report, and I appreciate the teamwork that was done with, uh, with PD, code enforcement, and Casuma's Fire. The, uh, information on the fireworks amnesty had run on social media two to two and a half weeks before the event. I posted it on my page. If folks follow my page, they know, and if they didn't, um, there's other ways that the city promoted the event, and even had it on T V. And that's what I really appreciate because I think Mr. Thompson had a point. We all love the Fourth of July. We all love the fireworks. But we also have to keep it safe as well. And when you look at the activity that took place on the Fourth and the Fifth, we had to respond to eighty incidents, twenty-two fires. And there were, there were a lot more, especially when you look at five hundred and sixty-two calls that were done in this, in this timeframe. That's a lot of activity, and we aren't even, and that just barely scratched the surface of what took place throughout the city because, um, every place where we saw everything go up in the air, we always think it's a quarter mile away, half mile away. No, that's like literally one or two blocks from your home. And the video that you showed, I know that area quite well because it's very close to where I live. And so, a, a, and so when you have, you have pets who suffer with PTSD, men and women, humans that suffer with PTSD, just the, just the sound is, uh, affects the neuro, the neurological senses, but also when you see them go up in the air, and after we've talked about it for so long, so many years talking about we need to curb the use of illegal fireworks for safety reasons, and seeing how we have to call Fire Department for spot fires, and seeing them race to the scene on the Fourth of July, and in some cases, the Third and the Fifth and the Sixth, is, we have to do what we can to reduce. This wasn't meant to be a revenue builder, but I'm glad that we put this ordinance in place because now it creates the conversation, especially when you have an individual that has, that's looking at a hundred thousand dollars in fee, in fines that they have to pay. No one wants to be saddled with that. And this is about promoting safety, using safe and sane fireworks, buying fireworks through our local nonprofits who need it for the programs that they use. That's what this whole program is about. And I really appreciate the work that, um, Lieutenant Magdalena and Jose Mendez. I, I really appreciate what you guys are doing with Lance Ray, Chief Ray over at Casuma's, because this is about making the community safe and really trying to promote, um, safe and responsible practices, not only for yourself and your family, but for your neighbors as well. Um, really appreciate this. Thank you.
Councilmember Spies?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so first, uh, I want to thank, uh, Lieutenant Magdaleno and, uh, Mr. Mendez. I know that this is taking a lot of time, and it's one of those issues that, that, um, you know, it, it affects a lot of people, right? Some people want to have all these, you know, these, uh, big fireworks, and, and others, uh, need a little bit more peace, right? And, um, so for me, for myself, I, I love fireworks, um, and, you know, the safe and sane legal fireworks, that, that's, that's, that, that should, uh, continue to be maintained. The issue is that we have people who are a little thick in the head and don't understand that these, uh, these illegal fireworks create a big problem, um, in, in terms of safety. Right? It isn't just the noise, right? That's, that, to me, is actually kind of a small part of it. The biggest issue is the impact on safety, um, for other people. And so I also, um, you know, it's, it's, for me, it's not fair to people to start, um, um, fining them unless you have a good public outreach. And what I'm thrilled to see is that, um, Kristin Lawrence and her Public Affairs team did a fantastic job in doing a whole lot of outreach to people. Folks are still going to say, I didn't know, right? How, how did I know that wasn't legal, right? How did I know you were going to hit me with that fine, right? Um, but, you know, there, there was extensive outreach done in, in a multiple of different ways, and so I want to thank you, Kristin, for that. I think, I think it bears a reminder to folks that July fourth, uh, for the city, uh, is, it's an all hand on, all hands on deck day. Right? We have, uh, you know, throughout the, the, the city staff, uh, a lot of, a lot of folks are focused on, you know, the Fourth of July fireworks, um, that day, right? And, and CSD is focused there as well. But let me focus specifically here a little bit on the Police Department. Um, you know, in the morning, a, as usual, right, they supported the, uh, Elk Grove Food Bank run, right? And they had to dedicate officers to that. And then, you know, there were, there were events in Camden that had happened, and they support that. Right? And then we've got our fireworks display, which, you know, you have to support public safety in the parks. More people, right? More, more things, or more, uh, officers that need to be involved, right? And oh, by the way, it's the Fourth of July. You got your DUIs, you got your traffic incidents, you've got all of the other things that happen on, on any other regular day, right? And then you put on the top all of that. Many people who are understandably upset that these fireworks are going off in their area and putting their homes, their families, their land at risk. So I, I do recognize, you know, some, some residents get unhappy that you didn't get to all of them. You didn't get to more. There need to be more. I, I, I wholeheartedly agree. I, I would have loved to have seen more, more citations issued. Um, but I, I think this is a really good start, particularly given all of the other things that PD and the city staff and CSD have to do during the day. So I, I want to, I mean, it's, it's important for me to give a big thanks to, you know, our public safety folks for doing that, as well as the, as the rest of the city. Code enforcement, it's, it's never any fun, uh, to be out there and, and tell people that they're not doing what they're supposed to. Uh, I'm, I'm sure you got more than a little bit of attitude from people. But with that, I'm, I'm glad to see that, that we have that enforcement. Um, I hope that next year, that awareness will increase. I hope their friends tell their friends, tell their other friends that illegal fireworks in Elk Grove is not good, and we don't, we're not going to put up with it. Um, but thank you so much for the report. Um, and like I said, Kristin, next year, we, we'll get them, we'll let them know even more, right? Okay. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Robles?
Yeah. Thank you so much. I'm kind of just echoing what my councilmembers, uh, said. It's almost as if they looked at my bullets and kind of took all my talking points.
Wishful thinking.
Wishful thinking, right? No. But in all seriousness, thank you. Um, it's, it's insane to see that someone got a hundred thousand dollar fine, right? But that's what we're, we're enforcing, that there's no more illegal fireworks going to happen here, and that's what we continue to do. So thank you for the hard work. Um, I'm curious, because I'm all about trying to make, you know, kind of be in front of the cutting edge. You, you mentioned podcasts. Um, was there any traction with the podcast?
Over a hundred downloads. Yeah, there was some traction, over a hundred downloads.
Okay, awesome. And then I'm assuming everything with, with, um, obviously with our social media and everything, there must have been good traction on that as well. I know sometimes we don't ever go into the weeds with like how, what's, how much the numbers on that. But I know that even if we do like a reel, um, that's always one thing that twenty seconds, thirty seconds, that catches people's attention. If we can start sharing that on our social media platforms and our social medias just in general, I think that would also spark, um, more conversation. No pun intended on that, but more conversation as far as, uh, as far as making sure that nobody is doing these, um, illegal fireworks things. So I really appreciate the work that you've been doing, and definitely the coll, collaboration between CSD, code enforcement, and R P D. Thank you.
Well, thank you to my council colleagues for your thoughtful comments. And my plea is also to the media, we have someone here today, to take this message, this is not just for the city of Elk Grove, but everywhere, that it's unacceptable. Putting people and property in harm's way is unacceptable. I went on a ride along with our, uh, with our fire chief and tended, I don't even know how many calls. And it's frightening. Um, one of the, one of the calls that we, um, went to, we had horses that were in jeopardy, that had nowhere to go as the flames were encroaching, um, to the land. It, this is just unacceptable bad behavior. There are many, you know, there's safe legal fireworks. If you like the stuff that goes in the sky, please come to the park. About a beautiful, safe Fourth of July celebration. There are safe ways to do this, but it is reckless and irresponsible in putting your city, your neighbors, your friends, animals, people in jeopardy, and it is just unacceptable. So I'm glad that we stepped up with, um, increasing the penalty and with more public education and awareness. Hopefully, you know, next year, we get to more people. And not only, you know, I, I would like to see less citations, only because I want to see changed behavior. This is not about making money. I want changed behavior. This needs to stop. And I, I'm glad that we're taking this sort of zero tolerance approach for this. And, um, the earlier we start, because I also worry about July second, third. There's all, illegal fireworks are happening on those days too, including the Fifth, Sixth, and I feel like it went into like the early teens, um, in some nights. So this, you know, it's, it's getting out of hand, not just here, but everywhere, and it's time that we, you know, I'm glad that we've stepped up in holding them accountable. Let's keep that great work up and, um, keep the public education and awareness up. And I think, you know, sharing, maybe even collaborating, getting some footage from the, uh, Casuma's Fire, on what it looks like, the, the cause and effect, that this is what's happening. This is what happens from, you know, that little moment of excitement of lighting these illegal fireworks, to see that there, there's real harm. And even the footage that you showed, that's alarming. You know, that was the caliber, I think, what we saw at the Fourth of July celebration, that, that many fireworks going off from one centralized location. So hopefully, we see a lot of changed behaviors, and, uh, we see less and less of this. So thank you again. Excellent report. All right. With that, we will move on to our next item.
That's item nine point three, which is to receive information on the twenty twenty-four climate compass and provide direction as needed.
So good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Carrie Whitlock, Strategic Planning and Innovation Program Manager. So this evening is the final of the three, um, information sessions related to the climate compass. Um, these are intended to provide information and receive council input on specific potential strategies and actions for the ongoing update to the twenty nineteen climate action plan. So in this session, I will discuss the transportation sector in more detail. Um, what's included in that, more details on some of the emissions, and discuss some of the state and federal legislation that will impact this section, and then talk about potential strategies to reduce emissions here. Um, in each of these sessions, we have been highlighting a short list of potential strategies and actions that we would like to receive council input on for further refinement. And the intention is not to make any decisions or final determinations at the meeting, but to provide guidance to direct the further analysis needed, um, for ultimate decision-making. So I won't, again, go through all the background because that was covered at the July twenty-fourth meeting, but just to highlight that the current update, the climate compass, is intended to be a sequel qualified climate action plan, the same as our current cap. And in order to be a sequel qualified, um, the document must contain certain technical requirements, including quantifying existing and forecasted greenhouse gas emissions, establishing thresholds for, um, G H G emissions, specifying measures and standards that would collectively achieve the target emission level, and then include a monitoring plan. So this series of discussions is part of that work, to specify those measures and standards to achieve the needed, um, greenhouse gas emission reductions with further analysis planned, um, subsequent to these discussions in order to quantify the anticipated reductions with those. And again, the state emission reduction reduction levels were also discussed at a previous meeting. But just as a reminder, the current 2019 Climate Action Plan includes targets for 2050 of 80% below 1990 levels and for 2030 of 40% below 1990 levels. And the more recently adopted 2022 Scoping Plan outlines goals for 48% reduction of greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 and 85% reduction by 2045, both of which are not achievable with the current Climate Action Plan measures or with the legislative mandated actions the state or federal have done. So as I said, the focus tonight is on transportation. So that's the blue piece of the pie here. For this discussion, I'm going to include on-road transportation, which is our biggest emission sector, accounting for 57% of our emissions. But we'll also talk a little bit about off-road vehicles and equipment. They account for a smaller, just 2% of our emissions. Addressing on-road transportation is a key for reducing greenhouse gas emissions, given that they are such a large segment of our emissions. And focusing here can also help reduce our vehicle miles traveled and improve traffic congestion within the city. So included in on-road transportation are emissions from 100% of vehicle trips that stay within the city and 50% of vehicle trips that start or end outside the city. Emissions here do not reflect pass-through vehicles, right? So those emissions for trips that start and end outside the city. So for example, the vehicles driving down Highway 99 that don't stop in Elk Grove, those emissions are not accounted for here. So included in the off-road vehicle and emission, sorry, the off-road vehicle and equipment are construction equipment, industrial equipment, lawn and garden equipment, portable equipment such as small generators, and then transportation refrigeration units are included in that smaller 2%. So for on-road transportation, while the majority of our vehicle miles traveled, our VMT, are from passenger vehicles, commercial vehicles contribute a disproportionate amount of greenhouse gas emissions. So as the graph shows here, over 80% of our VMT is from passenger vehicles, but just 58% of our emissions are from passenger vehicles. This is because those commercial vehicles have a much higher emissions factor. And so while the efforts on reducing our vehicle miles traveled really should focus on our passenger trips, the efforts on reducing our emissions really need to focus on both passenger and commercial vehicles. So if we look at existing and then the legislative adjusted forecast for per capita emission, you can see there's a significant decrease in both 2030 and 2045. So with just the current enacted legislation, commercial emissions are forecast to reduce by 52% between 2021 and 2030, and then by 85% between 2021 and 2045. And then passenger emissions are forecast to reduce by about 32% by 2030 and 89% by 2045. However, even with those reductions, the state per capita objective for all sectors, right, which is shown in green there, you can see that that is still lower than the per capita emissions from just our on-road transportation sector for both 2030 and 2045. So as I said, while off-road vehicle and equipment make up a much smaller percent of our overall emissions, which is 2%, these emissions are anticipated to increase in the coming years. So by 2045, those emissions will account for about 8% of our overall emissions, and they're expected to double in terms of the emissions between 2021 and 2045 from the sector. So for the state as a whole, on-road transportation is also the largest greenhouse gas emission sector there, accounting for about 39% of state emissions in 2021. And so reducing emissions from on-road vehicles is critical for the state to achieve their targets as well. And so therefore, the state has focused a lot of regulations in this sector. So of the regulations listed here, those that are going to have the biggest impact on emissions include the Advanced Clean Cars regulations, which established greenhouse gas emission reduction standards for light-duty vehicles for model year 2017 through 2025. And those are more stringent than federal fuel economy standards. And then Advanced Clean Cars 1 also set mandates for increasing the percentage of zero emission vehicles, the EVs, that needed to be sold in the state each year. And then Advanced Clean Car 2 regulations actually provided higher percentages, starting with model year 2025. And then also established the target that all new passenger cars, light-duty trucks, and SUVs sold in California need to be zero emission by 2035. The Advanced Clean Fleets phases in zero emission fleet purchase requirements for medium and heavy-duty trucks for fleet owners that started in 2024, with the mandate that all those sold starting in 2036 will be zero emission with limited exceptions. There's also some additional diesel truck and buses that operate in California that must upgrade and reduce their greenhouse gas emissions as well. So while emissions from internal combustion engines, or ICEs, is a key consideration when you're looking at how do you reduce your emissions, BMT reductions are really important as well. So as noted, the Advanced Clean Cars 2 regulations do require that all new vehicles sold in 2035 will be zero emissions. But there will still be a significant number of gas-powered vehicles on the roads for some time after that, because ICE vehicles, they'll still be able to be driven, you'll still be able to buy used ICE vehicles, and you can still purchase them out of state and register them in the state of California after 25, or sorry, after 2035. So as noted with the emission forecasts, even with the Advanced Clean Cars 2 and the Advanced Clean Fleets regulations, which go into effect in 2035 and 2036, our on-road transportation emissions in 2045 are still forecast to be higher than the overall state objective for all sectors. So there is a need to work on reducing both greenhouse gas emissions through a focus on zero emission vehicle adoption and reducing vehicle miles traveled. So both of those. So the potential strategies that we'll look at around on-road transportation are divided into these two focus areas, decreasing vehicle miles traveled and increasing zero emission vehicle use. So as mentioned, decreasing BMT has other benefits besides just greenhouse gas emission reduction. They can help alleviate traffic congestion, and it can help provide healthy transportation options for our residents. So some of the potential actions related to decreasing BMT include building a more connected and accessible active transportation system through implementing the Bicycle Pedestrian Trails Master Plan recommendations. This would allow more residents to connect safely and easily to the locations they would like to go to without having to use a vehicle to get there. Additionally, expanding the Electric Bike voucher program to encourage more residents to purchase and use e-bikes would help to reduce vehicle usage. This could mean that the e-bike voucher program becomes an annual budget allocation in future, allowing more residents to benefit. The program was approved just four weeks ago, and the city already has almost 1,000 individuals signed up to receive information on when the voucher program opens for applications. And we've done just limited outreach so far. So we're expecting a lot of interest in this program when it finally launches. So electric bikes help to make biking more accessible for those of different fitness levels and abilities and, and different ages, and can provide a much less expensive mobility option for people. The city can also work with SACRT to improve the public transit system, providing a more reliable and accessible system to encourage greater usage with that. And then an additional potential action in this area would be to develop a local transportation management agency. And a TMA could help work with residents and businesses to provide education and support alternative transportation services and programs that would reduce So the second focus area for on-road transportation is to increase zero emission vehicle use. So with the state legislation already focused on the sale of new zero emission vehicles, potential actions here would focus on the infrastructure to increase the pace of EV adoption and make the benefits of EV ownership more, more accessible to all residents. So potential actions could include adopting a reach code for EV charging to meet a higher CalGreen standard for multi-unit residential and commercial development. The proposed 2025 code would increase the mandatory requirement for EV charging at multi-unit residential and commercial locations. The requirement for multi-unit residential is currently expected to include low-power Level 2 receptacles for 100% of assigned parking spaces and 25% of common-use parking spaces with actual Level 2 chargers installed. If the Tier 1 measure would then require that this be 40% with Level 2 chargers installed for those common-use parking spaces. For commercial development, the 2025 code is currently expected to require that 20% of parking spaces be EV-capable. And EV-capable means that there is electrical capacity and conduit installed, but there's not actually a receptacle or a charger installed at that spot. But then in addition, 75% of the EV-capable spaces at office and retail locations would have EV chargers installed, and 50% of EV-capable spaces at other commercial locations would have EV chargers installed. So if the city adopted Tier 1 for this, the percentage of EV-capable parking spaces would increase to 30%. And with Tier 2, the percentage of EV-capable would increase to 45%. So with both Tier 1 and Tier 2, the percentage of the actual chargers installed requirement would remain the same, but the actual number of chargers would increase because the actual number of chargers is set based on the EV-capable spaces. So it's a little bit convoluted, because it's the state. But though I put some orange, you can see sort of an example of if the 250 parking spots were required for the development, then you can see how many EV-capable would be required with the different mandatory and Tier 1, Tier 2, and then how many EV installed for the different types of development. Another potential action would be to explore EV car sharing programs, to offer accessible and affordable EVs at specific locations, particularly focusing on existing multi-unit residential locations. So this would provide the benefits of EVs for a broader range of residents who may not yet be able to afford their own, who may not need to own a car full-time, or who don't have sufficient access to charging to be able to switch to an electric vehicle. And then a third potential action to improve EV infrastructure would be to prohibit the establishment of new gas stations or the expansion of, of gas infrastructure at existing gas stations unless the project provided EV charging stations onsite at a ratio of one new EV charger per one new fuel nozzle. So there's been a lot of jurisdictions around the state who've looked at outright bans on new gas stations, but this approach would install a lot of more EV chargers along with fuel infrastructure. So wouldn't, it would encourage that expansion of EV charging infrastructure and not completely eliminate the, the fuel infrastructure. And then the final section, as I mentioned, off-road vehicles and equipment are another area of concern as emissions are forecast to increase in the coming decades. So there are several potential actions that could be done to reduce emissions in this area. So first, there could be a requirement that all construction projects, starting after a specific date, such as, you know, July 1st, 2025, use renewable diesel and diesel-powered construction equipment. Renewable diesel is made from sustainable sources and has a lower sulfur level and can actually reduce CO2 emissions by up to 68% compared to petroleum diesel. Renewable diesel is actually available in California. It's one of the few states in the US that does have renewable diesel, and the price is actually comparable to petroleum diesel, with the average cost of renewable diesel being about 11 cents cheaper over the past seven years than the average cost for petroleum diesel. Another potential strategy would be to prohibit the use of fossil-fuel powered generators at construction sites on all discretionary projects. So this would be implemented, this could be implemented with temporary power service or with battery energy storage systems or EV-powered, EV-based power solutions at the discretion of the developer. And this would help to reduce the portable emissions, which are expected to more than double by And then one final potential action could be to either encourage or require business owners to convert or replace their gas-powered gardening equipment with electric or other zero-emission alternatives. While small engines used in lawn equipment are not run as frequently as vehicle engines, they have a much higher emissions factor. So running a gas-powered lawn, sorry, running a gas-powered leaf blower for one hour emits the same pollutants as driving a gas-powered car for 20 hours. So in January 2024, the state enacted a ban on the sale of new gas-powered lawn equipment manufactured after December 31st, 2023, but the current law does not address existing equipment, some of which can last for decades. So there aren't, there, and there are incentive programs through the Air District for commercial businesses to help support such a transition. So with that, I am available for questions or to hear council direction on this effort.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will open up public comment. We have one person signed up to speak, Savannah Brown.
Hello. My name is Savannah. I'm actually part of Climate Ambassadors with Carrie Whitlock, who just spoke. I'm a fairly new resident, been here for under a year, will be a year next month. And I wanted to talk about the reducing vehicle miles, miles traveled efforts in Elk Grove and ways that we can mitigate that, aside from the things that were just talked about. Me personally, I do own an electric bike, and I am a preschool teacher. I commute all the way to Sacramento in Midtown, and I would drive or ride my electric bike all the way from Elk Grove to Midtown in Sacramento City. 14 miles, and it makes, the e-bike makes it a lot easier. However, I have had to stop doing that. As a preschool teacher, my son, now who's two years old, can now come to school with me. And the state of our bikeways and infrastructure in Elk Grove especially, I don't feel safe enough to ride with him with me on the bike. A lot of parents that come to the preschool that I work at, you know, ride with their kids on their bikes. There's, especially in, in Midtown, but in the denser areas of Sacramento City, there are a lot of really good bike, safe and regulated bike lanes that we can use. The ones here in Elk Grove, we have bike lanes. However, since they are mostly just paint on the road, on a lot of our busy arteries with vehicles going upwards of 40, 50 miles per hour, if anyone were to swerve just a little bit to the right, we would probably be involved in a fatal crash. And I do not feel safe having my son with me on the bike. I do want to urge that we put in protected bike lanes in order to make sure that our roads that are, have a speed limit over 30 miles per hour, I would really urge that we put in protection, physical protection for those bike lanes. I do see a lot of people on bikes on the sidewalks because they don't feel safe on our bike lanes. And that shows a lot, that people who have to use their bikes are now being pushed onto sidewalks that are now putting pedestrians at risk. And we see a lot of interest in this e-bike program, which shows that there's a lot of people in Elk Grove who want to ride and want to, to get on their bikes and use it to commute, use it to get to the grocery store. There's a lot of different uses for, for these e-bikes, but they don't want to because of the safety issue. And I just want to urge that, that we put in a lot of resources, like we have been for, for our road infrastructure and repavement, on also protecting those bikeways and getting people off the road, not only to help the climate, but also people who are in poverty and don't, can't afford to ride a bike, they can be safe as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Bob Lilly, and that will be our final speaker at this
Hello, Bob Lilly, also part of the Climate Ambassador Program. We researched the transportation section and came up with the following suggestions. So from the research, it is obvious or apparent that there is not enough energy right now available to do a full EV program. There's just, you know, smud does not have the power to be able to pull that off. So it has to be phased in over time. If you have a hybrid car right now, charging overnight, the hybrid car, I, I charge mine pretty much every day, and I go through one tank of gas a month. pretty much every day and I go through one tank of gas a month. So it is very effective at reducing emissions. If you go to a fully EV, you take a Hummer, the battery on a Hummer outweighs most cars. So the large batteries are such that you have to push that weight through space and that requires more energy than otherwise. Also, the wear on the tires because of the increased weight is greater, you get particulate emission. And there is some indication that for plastics, the microplastics, this is a major source that goes into the sea. So if you are looking to do something, bikes are the best alternative. You get a whole lot of bang for the buck. The amount of energy that goes into building a bike, the amount of energy that you save riding a bike is by far the strongest characteristic that you can do. Future communities, if you make them walkable, where the community has a mix of residential, commercial, and jobs, where people can walk from the residential to the jobs, walk from residential to the commercial with off-road bikes, bike paths, that looks to be the best design going forward for future communities, something to consider. If you take your bike paths that you have, like we have, Elk Grove has lots of great bike paths. If you put a solar corridor over top of that, the solar corridor makes your bike path, so by a solar corridor, I mean you, you, you take about a six, well, the bike paths are ten to twelve feet wide. If you put above that a solar set of panels, it costs about a million and a half to do a mile of solar panels over a bike path. With that, that cost gets, you get enough energy out of it to get that money back in about five years. So it would, it would make bicycling something that would become an all-weather event. You can do it wintertime, summertime, when it's too hot, wintertime, when it's too rainy. And you generate the extra energy that you need to transition. It looks like I'm out of time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I do not have anyone else signed up to speak on this. I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. Questions, comments? I'll start to the right this time. Councilmember Robles?
Thank you for that in-depth presentation. I know when it comes to EVs, it's always, it's a difficult conversation, right? Because as we try, we get stuff from the state, cities are left to try to figure this out on their own. And the reality is EVs are super expensive and some folks can't do the transition right away. Or even, I know for me, I was able to get an EV and I'm still trying to figure out what, how many mileage I can get without getting stuck, right? Again, but I'm fortunate, there's folks in our, in our city who, for whatever reason, just can't, can't get there. But I'm thankful that we have, we're taking a proactive approach as far as what to do. And thank you for coming and speaking about bicycle, like bicycles, right? Riding bikes, because that's the real thing. As I was charging my car right on Elk Grove Boulevard and right next to Nugget, I saw a cyclist actually run into a car. And you bring a value, like that's, that's something that's super needed and I have that written down. Hopefully, we can start talking about having those guardrails. I don't know what the specific, the specific word is for that, but hopefully, we can do that and establish that. Because I saw that in the car, nothing happened to the car, it kept on going. The pedestrian was the one freaking out, right? Because he almost got into that bad accident and that was literally like two days ago. So thank you for bringing that and thank you for voicing that. Because as we look in, we're starting to see a trend where young professionals and the younger generation will use EVs, right? All power to you from going from here to Midtown, fourteen miles. You know, I can't imagine how scary that must be and all these like situational awareness of where you're at because of a car might become that. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. But looking at this, I mean, I think we just have to be super diligent in how we approach this. And I definitely want to hear more of what my council colleagues have to say.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Spees?
Thank you. Ms. Whitlock, could I ask you to come back and put up some of the, that way I can kind of talk to them when they're up on the screen so they make more sense, I think. So, you know, I think, and I first have to say this and I, and I don't intend to be cheeky about it in any way, but if we're looking to reduce vehicle miles traveled, the state of California can do easily by continuing to support work from home policies. We have a large number of state workers here in the city of Elk Grove. And if the city, if the state was, was very serious about reducing vehicle miles traveled, they could continue to support work from home policies. But I'll park that right there. So if you could bring up the, I think it was action one, we're in the vehicle miles One, okay. So the only thing to add on one C, we hear it all the time, it's slightly off topic, but it's certainly within the realm of, of the environment. Could we please ask SACRT to provide more trashcans so that the litter that is on the side of the bus stops could go into there? I would appreciate it. I hear it a lot. So please add that. It does help the environment. So other than that, I think I'm okay on, on those. Other than that, action two A, if you could go to that one real quick. All right. So I'm having some difficulty digesting this because I think that in my mind, there is a problem. And that's particularly how it would interact with affordable housing. I mean, we have affordable housing right now that will be coming in in, you know, several years, right? And it'll be on a one-to-one ratio, one apartment to one vehicle, right? And then the other challenge becomes, and I'm certainly not saying that folks who are in affordable housing cannot afford EVs, some of them certainly can, but my, my, my problem is in setting up a standard that would wind up fiddling with that allocation of one-to-one and provide even less parking. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes, I think what you're talking about is we're seeing, because of the way the state regulations are on the housing, there's a lower parking obligation for the project upfront.
Right.
And so as those residents are financially able to move into electric vehicles, how, what's the availability of that infrastructure, I think? Is that where you're going?
Well, I guess I'm more concerned with the shorter term, where we may overallocate to EVs when they're, when the, the, the gas-powered, right, is already at a premium, right? That's my biggest problem. And I don't want to inadvertently force more cars to be parked on the streets, right?
So looking at this table, just carried, walked through it, I think, pretty well, but it is a complicated formula that the building code uses to lay this out. So the orange is this hypothetical project, whether it's commercial, multifamily, industrial, it has 250 parking spaces required under either city zoning regulation or the state requirements for parking for certain affordable housing projects. Whatever that project is, it's got 250 stalls of parking. Under state regulation, the building code, twenty percent of that 250, or in this case, 50 stalls, need to be EV capable, which means the underground infrastructure of conduits and availability in a panel to wire up those conduits with cables and set an actual charger at the stall needs to be there when that parking lot is built. And so the fundamental change that's happening when we look at mandatory to tier one to tier two is that percentage goes up. And so there's more conduit that's being laid when the parking lot's being initially constructed. Now, as a result of that, in each of those tiers, you see increases in the count based on the parking, but not on the ratio of what ultimately needs to have actual chargers installed in the lot. And yes, to your point, if we're talking about, let's say, a multifamily, an affordable multifamily project being built today, there's probably not a lot of electric vehicles that those residents own or utilize in the parking, that are parking in that parking lot. And so, yes, having thirty, going from 25 to 38 stalls with charging equipment in the parking lot seems like a pretty crazy thing, but it becomes on the management of that complex to then enforce if there's any parking restrictions. And so if nobody has an EV vehicle and those are spaces available for residents, they would just otherwise be available. It's a little bit different than when we think about a shopping center where it becomes much more fundamental, like say, over by Nugget. Okay, you have the Tesla, the SMD chargers that are there, you really want to reserve those for the electric vehicles because you want to see the turnover happen. In a multifamily complex, that charging is really happening overnight by residents.
Okay. Well, so I appreciate that you've solved that answer in my mind, but it opened up another one. And that is particularly related to affordable housing, right? The cost of housing, to build housing is already going up significantly. And so now what we're saying is we're, we potentially, right, could be asking the contractor to put in more infrastructure that may never be used. And that seems like it's increasing the cost, which is, is affecting the affordability of housing, right?
Can I make one correction on this? So the table here is for commercial. For multi-unit residential, the requirement is going to be that if there is an assigned parking spot for a unit, there will have to be a receptacle at that parking spot. That is not a charger, that is a plug, right? So every assigned parking spot will have to have a plug for an EV to be able to be plugged into, not a charger. For open parking spots, so if it's unassigned parking spots or guest parking, then the new code will require, did I say twenty, twenty-five percent of those to have level two, low-power level two chargers installed. And in tier one would be forty percent of those would need to be low-power level two chargers installed in the open spaces. But for every, for multi-unit residential, every assigned spot is going to have to have a receptacle already in the, in the proposed new code.
Yeah. So there's stuff already happening in the base requirements. I think to your point, though, we could study this a little bit more and see, is there some branching that we may want to consider if we're going down increased regulation? Like, hey, if you're an affordable complex, maybe there's a different off-ramp than if you were just a commercial project, so we can bifurcate that a little bit. I will say, from a staff perspective, we are a bit concerned that as residents ultimately are able to afford to move into an EV vehicle, which may still be a ways out, but it's coming at some point, the used vehicle market is starting to drop in those prices, that we have projects on the ground today are going to construction where that infrastructure does not exist. And so now there is a disconnect between where those people are living and where their available charging infrastructure is. And so we're really more concerned about in two strategies. One, new projects coming in, having the available infrastructure, at least the conduit. It's always cheaper to put it in after the fact, if you've got the conduit in place and if you're coming back and retrofitting. And so we can work out the timing of when that actual installation of the charger happens later on. But we're also worried about existing complexes and how we do the retrofits there. And that's where we're working with our partnership with Sacramento City, Sacramento County, and SMD, to be able to look at those options, go after grant funds, to start partnering with the existing affordable complexes, to get that infrastructure starting to go in the ground sooner so that when those, so there is not a barrier on the charging side for those residents when they ultimately make the conversion.
Right. For sure. It's a fine balance you got to walk. You say, well, they, they may not be able to afford it right now, but someday when they do, that'll be awesome, we don't have the infrastructure there. I totally get it. The challenge is affordable, affordability of housing today, right?
And from a construction standpoint, it's always cheesier, we can, putting in conduit is cheap and easy.
For sure. As long as we're talking about conduit, simply the pipe is that.
Right. If we at least get the conduit in, then it's easier to go forward from there as the demand starts to pick up.
Right. Yep. Okay. But I'm glad that you mentioned other agencies because if you go to the three A, B, and C, have we included Building Trades, ABC NorCal, WEC, General Contractors Association in any of these ideas? Because this is, these are issues that, that would directly affect their contractor companies. So I guess I would, I would suggest that we do that. I'll start, I guess I'll start backwards with C. I wouldn't, I really wouldn't be interested in, in requiring business owners to get rid of their gear. I think that an encouragement might not, might not be bad, much in the same way that Councilmember Soon has, you know, advocated for, for e-bikes, right? Provide some sort of incentive that way. But the reality of it is that there are a lot of businesses there who, who operate on thin margins, of course, with, with older equipment, but, but forcing them to, to replace is simply not right. Once, I mean, they'll, they'll probably try to fix it forever, right? But at some point in time, if they have to go and purchase a new piece of equipment in 2025 or beyond, they're only going to have electric options, right? Let's see. But then, and I think, I think really on the other ones, it was really just an issue of let's, let's be sure that we get some, some buy-in from Building Trades, WEC, GCA, and ABC NorCal. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay. I would suggest all of the trades, not just those. Other trades as well.
Building trades.
We don't, I don't know what they do or don't, I don't know what.
Building trades should include the carpenters and pipe fitters and welders.
The carpenters, all, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was using that as an umbrella term.
Okay, okay. Just making sure. We're not leaving anyone out.
No, no.
Okay. Vice Mayor, were you done?
I was done, thank you.
Okay, yes. Vice Mayor?
So Ms. Whitlock, I definitely appreciate the report. I appreciate all the recommendations in here. The feedback provided by Councilmembers Robles and Spees were super helpful, especially knowing how we are moving, not we, but the state is moving towards trying to meet all the state thresholds in lowering greenhouse gas emissions, especially in the transit sector. Because I know dating back to the mid, early to mid 2000s, we've always known that mobile sources, transportation was the, was the hardest threshold to break and to really solve because it's the human behavior of having to get from point A to point B. And also, the other big hurdle is that most of our communities here in California are sprawled. And not, not, not all the communities have public transit that can get people from point A to point B in an effective and efficient manner like San Diego, Southern California, or the Bay Area. Sacramento area is slowly getting there, but it's, it's, we're quite a ways off. And that's, and it's definitely a team effort by every community, every city, because when you're trying to lower greenhouse gas emissions, but just by nature, you, you are forced to drive beyond 10 miles to your place of work, how are we trying to create smart communities? How are we trying to develop smart communities in that respect? And that's where the strategies that are, that are used in, in, in strategy one that I really like, because for bicycles, encouraging and expanding the e-bikes, the use of e-bikes, the incentive program, we're moving in that direction. But we have to really promote safety and increase safety so people feel secure in not only riding to and from work on, on our roadways, but also using our trailways on weekends. I definitely like the strategy of creating solar canopies because you're putting energy back into the grid, especially for nighttime lighting on the trails and on our roadways. And that's very important to, to consider and look at the feasibility of. When we look at concept two and the strategies there, I think Councilmember Spees, I, I, I really like your suggestions and the explanation behind EV charging because the big picture in this whole, in this whole thing is trying to make sure that we're right sizing complexes with the stalls that we need for those complexes, not only for commercial, but I also consider residential. We do have a number of complexes, apartment complexes coming online, and there are large complexes that require stalls for EVs because as the secondhand market starts to evolve, people will, will, will want and need not only electric car charging stations, but the, but the big thing that's going to be needed is portability. Being able to use not just a, an EV stall because of the exclusivity that one brand would have, but being able to use a plug that can connect and that can be used for any sort of car, but having that connect, but having that cord or to be available because not everyone will have a Tesla, not everyone will have a Nissan, not everyone will have a Volkswagen that is exclusive to electrify America. But it's, we need to have something to where we can work something, and SMD, they're the experts at this, we could work with them on that, but making sure that we have the right connectors so people don't have to drive and wait for, for a stall to open up either at Nugget or at the shopping center over here on Elk Grove Boulevard. or Walmart, in the Walmart neighborhood centers located. Because you do have a lot of stalls, but you'd also, you also have a lot of wait times. And so we want to reduce the wait times. We want to make things a little bit more um, convenient for, for the individuals as they use them. That helps encourage more use of, of, of EVs. Um, but I think we, we really touch on the bigger picture of affordability. Because affordability is definitely um, the word of the day at the state capitol right now. And they're looking at affordability in a host of ways, from housing to utilities to healthcare. And it's refreshing because people, that's the real issue that we really need to look at. I appreciated Mr. Jones for coming in earlier, Ronnie Jones for coming in earlier because uh, that touches on a real issue is that um, as prices for some things go down, the prices for food and housing go up. And it's like, well, we get, how do we put that genie back in the bottle? And we have to be very strategic, but also uh, not to be afraid to be tactical where needed. Because um, if we're going to uh, make things more, if we're trying to create a greener future, a more affordable future, we have to look at, at, at ways and tactics on how we can move forward in that direction and be courageous in that respect. But um, but I, I do appreciate the direction of talking to the trades. Uh, but also talk to the builders as well. Because um, because they're all trying to figure out how they can, how they can uh, usher around a green, a greener uh, um, format. But the way to do it is, how can we learn from each other? How, and what can SMU D do to help make things more affordable, make things more economical? So we can have, so, so we can make these installs and use of these installs a, a, a really, a reality. But these are all good things and, and, and these are all great suggestions. And I think we um, just gotta keep talking, keep working. Um, because statewide, we're not going to meet these goals and we can't do them in a silo. And so it's gonna have to be a statewide effort where we, where we work together, communicate, um, definitely understand how we can utilize these reach codes to, to make our efforts um, very successful in making that transition. But this is good stuff, thank you very much.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I heard a lot of things that I think I agree with my colleagues. I'm gonna, but I'm gonna leave it to staff to discern whether or not there is some conflict. When you, uh, there's just a lot of detail here. And I really appreciate Ms. Whitlock, your, your presentation, all the research you've done. Obviously, this is the next round of it, you know, so there's a, there's a lot um, that you've done. So thank you very much. Um, as far as the decreasing vehicle miles traveled, uh, I think one A is, is um, something that we as a city can control, so I'm wholeheartedly supporting that. Uh, I, it was really emphasized to me when I, first of all, I thank, I want to thank the Speaker for, for coming down here and sharing her experience. It reminded me of the time when I suggested to my wife to go do a bike ride with our son. And um, she was very mad at me at the end because of how the experience that we had trying to get across the street and connecting to different trails. So we know there's a lot of work to be done there. So I, I would definitely emphasize uh, what we can do for one A, prioritize those improvements. There's a lot of corridors, landscape corridors that we have, like on Bruceville Road, right? On, on Lagoon and Oak Grove. They're beautiful, but they're underutilized. And I think we could spare a few feet to make, make it safer for, for bikes. So hope uh, we can look into that. Uh, and then, of course, the e-bike program is great. Uh, I, incentivizing and trying to expand upon that uh, would be a great thing as well. Um, SACRT, increasing that reliability. You know, we um, I, I'm, I'm, I'm forgetting the, the name now, but we have our, the, the, the app and the, and the shuttle bus that I've been waiting to come down here. They kept talking about it, but I haven't, um, the um.
You're talking about Smart Ride?
Yeah, Smart Ride, yeah.
We'll have an update from RT for you at a future meeting. We're working with them and pulling the information together.
Okay, yeah, cause I, it's been years. We, we, it's supposed to be our turn. I mean, they went to West SAC and then, yeah, Citrus Heights is supposed to come here. So anyway, yeah, if we can push that and, and maybe expand upon it, I think that would be, that's a really, I think, easy one that will allow um, connecting, you know, the, our residents to even our, our transit ser, our larger transit service. So, so, so definitely that. And then the, the TMA, I think, is a great idea. I would just encourage uh, trying to find some efficiencies with our Trail Committee. I, you know, I, I think that, there's some, there's some um, cooperation that would, would make sense. So those are great, especially when you're talking about the individual passenger vehicles being eighty, over eighty percent of our J H G. I think if we, if we get these right, I think we should make, make some good progress on that. Uh, on two, yeah, I, you know, similar concerns with Councilmember Spees mentioned. I'm wondering what conversations have we had with SMU D in terms of, is the grid ready? Do we, you know, as things come online, will be able, will they be able to accommodate?
That is something we've discussed with SMU D um, through the electrification M O U that we're part of. Um, that Christopher Jordan mentioned. So we have talked to them. One of the things with the grid is, right, we are not switching to a hundred percent of electric vehicles tomorrow. Right, so they will continue over the coming years to make improvements to the grid as we continue to increase the number of electric vehicles that come online and that sort of thing. So, so there, there is always work to be done on grid reliability, but they are looking at it as a long-term as well as the transition happens over time.
Right, well, good, yeah, I'm glad those conversations are, are happening. So, you know, they can accommodate what we're doing. I think what uh, Councilmember Spees mentioned, I mean, the, having the conduit in place, I, I think makes sense. We, we did that for, for new home construction. So I think doing it here is a cost-effective way of, of uh, getting us ready for, for, for these chargers. EV sharing programs, I think that's also a great idea. Uh, whether it's those, what's they called, zip cars or that's car sharing? I think, I think those are fantastic ideas. The extension of the, of the e-bike program. So um, that's another one. Again, these are things within our, within our control. So this is, I think, I feel really positive about, or encouraged that um, we can implement a lot of these, a lot of these strategies. Uh, yeah, two C, I mean, I, you know, I, I'm not ready to, to prohibit things at this point. Only, uh, again, you know, creating winners and losers at this stage. I'm not quite there yet. I think, again, these things that we're talking about here, uh, the other ones that we, one and, all the ones, and then two A, two B. I think those are the things that um, we should, we should try first. And then moving on to uh, three, same thing on here that I agree with Councilmember Spees. We have contractors come into our city and they do big projects, but there are only one proj, you know, it's only one project on their, on their list. They're working throughout the region. And, and so um, I think we have to, we have to be cognizant of, of, of those, those industries. And there will be, there will be a drive towards, you know, towards these things. So I think we keep an eye out on, on the market, see how things develop. We reach out to them and, you know, similarly, again, to the home building industry, we knew that electrification was coming uh, in, into, into the market. They were preparing for it. So I, I think as we work together with industry, the, I think everybody acknowledges what we're trying to accomplish, right? And so in terms of reducing greenhouse gases to address, uh, to protect ourselves from, from effects of climate change. So I think having these greater conversations with folks in a, in a collaborative manner um, is, is the, is the best way for, for us to, to get to where we want to go. As far as, and the, the fossil fuel generators speaks to the same thing. And that's a subset of the, of the contractors, the diesel-powered construction equipment. As far as the, the lawnmower and leaf blowers, that was really surprising to me. That one hour use of that could be eleven hundred vehicle miles traveled. I mean, that, that's, that's a lot. There might not be a whole lot of those people out there. I mean, that, that use leaf blower still and gas-powered leaf blowers at that. But it was, it's really, it was really um, enlightening to me to know that that has that much of an impact. So having said that, I go back to uh, incentivization. You know, we should look at um, maybe a, a, you know, pot of funds that we will use each year to incentivize, you know, any outliers out there who are still using gas-powered leaf blowers. I, I'm guessing there aren't that many, but I don't know. But it, it's um, I think something like that should, should be looked at.
Yeah, there's, there's definitely a lot, right? I mean, particularly in the commercial space, right? The folks who are out there who are maintaining, you know, the streets and all that. There's, there's absolutely a lot, which, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying it's bad. I'm just saying that most, most, I think most of the uh, home users are typically now using like electrical.
Yeah.
But I think in, when you're in the commercial space, you probably see a lot more.
Yeah, I appreciate.
And, you know, I, sorry.
I want to add just really quick, um, the Sacramento Air Quality Board District actually has incentive programs for folks who are moving from gas to EV. They have it on vehicles, they have it on commercial, they have it on um, lawnmowers. They have a whole website on here on what the incentive program is. And it's actually open, I was gonna bring it up afterwards.
Yes.
But now that you're talking about this, um, just brought it up and looked it up right now, so.
Perfect, thank you very much. And, and thank you for the distinction because I was, I was actually thinking more about residential. A lot, uh, leaf users of those, those things. But commercial, I, I'm not necessarily for because they don't necessarily just do business here in the city. So I wouldn't, you know, want to, I'm not there to incentivize someone else's business for, to use outside of our city. But, but individual residential homebo, homeowners is what I was, was out, what I was getting at. Uh, and I think they can look to AQMD for, for uh, businesses can look to AQMD for those types of programs if they want to transition over, so.
There, there's also income base for providing EVs and buying EVs. Um, the grants, I believe it just opened up earlier this month.
The Clean Course for All.
Yes, and that's something.
It is just income based. They've, they've taken out the zip code requirement now. So Elk Grove residents before were not actually eligible because our zip codes were not in any DAX. But we actually are now eligible, so all of the zip codes here are, but there is the income requirement.
But the key is to let people know.
Yeah.
That these things exist. Often, they'll sit on a website and nobody knows about it.
Right, right, yeah. No, thank you, that's all I had, but appreciate those other comments, yeah.
Thank you, excellent comments from my colleagues, additional resources, that's all good. Even CARB has resources. Um, but again, if no one knows about it, then they're of no use. So just want to thank you um, on one C, specifically as it relates to SACRT. I think Christopher Jordan, um, you mentioned that we are going to have a presentation soon. So definitely the Smart Ride. And then, you know, I've brought this up with the general manager as well. Um, and then in addition, the Bus Rapid Transit um, is part of that to really study and analyze the usage. Um, as we as a, you know, SACRT governing board start to look at light rail extension, we need to make sure that not just capacity, but also that the ridership would be there. So there's, there's many steps to get there. So I'm looking forward to the SACRT uh, presentation specifically as well. On all of the other components, um, there's a lot of great material there. So I don't want to be repetitive on that. I will also bring up, it was brought to my attention with uh, at our last SACRT meeting from a group of um, advocates, that the week without driving is coming up. That's September thirtieth through October sixth. And they're hoping to get all cities to participate. And it's not meant that you literally don't drive for a week, but try to incorporate other modes of transportation in some aspects of your life. So be it the e-bike, walking, taking public transportation, maybe even carpooling, but doing different things to lessen the stresses on the road. And just try to, you know, and it, it may become an opportunity for changed behaviors once we try that. So I don't know what the marketing campaign would look like. I, uh, for Kristen, I know that there's, there's a material out there. I don't think we would have to reinvent anything. But they are looking for other cities to participate and share what their experiences were like. So as we have these great goals, there's opportunities immediately just to try out, um, just in, you know, small pieces and trying to incorporate some of these strategies. So that would be nice to see. Other than that, thank you for your report.
And I also want to add, I believe if I'm not mistaken, September tenth, there is going to be a workshop at District Fifty-Six that Sacramento Regional Transit is going to hold that is going to invite the public in to have a discussion about a visioning process of what they would like to see in terms of transit here in Elk Grove going into the future. Uh, definitely a great opportunity to participate and be a part of that because um, because that's part of our overall effort to try and drive down um, emissions, especially when we're looking at the transportation sector being so, so large and so huge. This allows us an opportunity to really take control of that.
Yeah, just real quick, Vice Mayor, that's the Sacramento Advocates for Smart Transit are putting on the event uh, in partnership with RT and the city. We'll be there, where there's a panel discussion. And it's tying in very perfectly with our update to the Light Rail Master Plan for Extension of Services or B R T into the city. And so, um, we'll have more information out in the next few days for the public to attend.
That and the transit-oriented developments and how they all integrate.
So that's, yeah, so it's definitely, definitely getting the word out. Because I, I, we, we get so consumed with our lives that we tend to forget of these types of activities. And you want to be a part of this to really be a, a, an influencer in the process. And at least put some ideas on the board, give and give people something to think about. And that all ties in with what we're trying to do tonight, um, as far as the climate compass goes. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll move on to our next item.
That's item nine point four, to consider an increase in city council member salaries.
Evening, Council. John Hobbs, your city attorney, I think you have the pleasure of the last item of the night. I'll try not to violate the ten o'clock rule. All right, just a brief overview of a, a new law that allows for the city council, if you so choose, to increase your compensation at the council's request. This is bringing, brought back for consideration and discussion by the council. No action is going to occur tonight. So we are a general ass city. As council members of a general ass city, and by council members, I include with that the mayor for purposes of this discussion. You're allowed to set your salaries in a maximum amount that's generally tied to population. That's been the law for some time. The council raised the salaries to eight hundred dollars in two thousand and twelve, based on the law in effect at the time. And that said, in the municipal code two point zero four point zero one zero, there have been no increases in the council member salaries since two thousand and twelve. Last year, Senate Bill Three Twenty-Nine was passed and signed into law by the governor that increased the possibility for councils at your discretion to increase your salaries based again on population. The new population tier for a city of our size, which is between a hundred and fifty thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand people, is up to two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars per month in salary. When SB Three Twenty-Nine was passed, the legislature made certain findings, which I want to share with you. One of the findings was that the tiers for salaries for council members had not been changed since nineteen eighty-four. It's been some time since the, since the legislature had made any changes in this regard. And one of the other findings by the legislature is that by increasing salaries or giving councils the opportunity to increase salaries, it would increase diversity across various income levels, make it perhaps financially easier for folks who might want to run for council to financially afford it. So there is a process that would have to go into place if the council did want to raise salaries. Again, tonight, we're not going to be taking any action. This is just an overview and we'll receive direction from staff. Raising salaries by the city council requires an ordinance which would take two reads of the city council, first read, second read. These ordinances for this type of change in salary would have to happen at a regular meeting. And then, of course, the ordinance, as any other ordinance, would become effective thirty days after adoption. State law prohibits councils from doing any kind of an automatic increase, C P I, that sort of thing. You would always need to take a vote of the council and adopt or amend an ordinance in order to change city council salaries. In conjunction with making the approval of the ordinance, the council would need to make findings justifying and demonstrating the need for the increase in the ordinance. You have to make specific factual findings as to why you feel there's a need for the increase. And then the increase, and this is consistent with prior state law, this hasn't changed. Any increase that any council adopts would not go into effect until the next term of any council member. Not all five council members have to start a new term, but it has to be a new term for at least one council member. For us, that typically happens in December. So if you wanted to make a salary increase of the city council up to the amounts that are authorized, I have a couple of options here for you time-wise. One would be the first read in September, on September eleventh, second read being September twenty-fifth. The ordinance would go into effect thirty days later, but the increase in salary wouldn't go into effect until the start of a new term. It's a bit of a two-step process. The other option would be first read on September twenty-fifth, second read on October ninth. I would recommend that you not go past October ninth for your second read. If you. I would recommend that you not go past October 9th for your second read if you did want to make the salary change and make an adjustment, and if you did want to make it effective for the start of the next term, this builds in that type of leeway. If you didn't take action in time for the ordinance to be in effect by the start of the next term, you'd have to wait for the next two terms. So that is essentially, in a nutshell, I'm happy to answer any questions or any comments from the council.
All right, I will reserve questions and comments after we take public comment. So at this time, I will open up public comment opportunity, we have three people sign up. We'll start with Steve Lee, followed by Kathy Lee.
It seems convenient that you all waited until after the closing date for accepting candidate applications to apply for these raises. That reeks of selfishness and greed, tracing out exactly what we want in our elected leaders. However, it is transparent, so you do have that working for you. I'd like to remind the citizens in the council, these jobs in the dais are not full-time jobs, but they come with full-time benefits. The mayor, her paying benefits, including her pension, is currently almost $43,000 annually, and she still can't find time to commit to a group seeking to assist our areas homeless. The mayor, in case you didn't know, stepped down from the Sacramento Homeless Policy Council that meets only four times a year. You cut back on your responsibilities, but you think you deserve a raise. That seems disingenuous and hypocritical. Item 9.1 in your comments made that, under that, that point. The mayor wants to do less work and receive more money. Where do I sign up for a gig like that? Others on the dais, you receive over $22,000 annually in pay and benefits, including pension for your part-time work. All of you have full-time employment. Two members of this council have just two years' experience, one's most notable deed to date is getting a DUI. We're so proud. Let's compare. Our county attorneys, who spend hours in the courtroom and nights and weekends with no additional pay preparing cases, seeking justice, are currently on strike asking for a 5% raise, not 300%, like what you could approve here tonight. I worked in public service for 35 years, the best raise I ever received was a 5% raise. The county's preeminent argument in negotiations that I was part of, it was all about retention. If people aren't leaving, the pay must be adequate already. Here, the city council members want to remain in public service, so the government's public service argument doesn't seem to hold water for, concerning a raise. The raises if approved, excuse me, if the raises are approved, are our leaders willing to put their money where their mouth is? All of you approve the zoo, promoting the entirety of the zoo while only promoting one-fourth of the actual cost of it. The zoo, when completed, will cost Elk Grove taxpayers over $1 billion, and you've been holding back on that. I ask you to donate all sums of additional salary increase, over 10%, towards the funding of this zoo. The grandkids of first graders will be paying for this zoo that you did not even allow them to vote on. Are you willing to stand behind this monster you all created that will likely bankrupt the city and do your part to try and fund it? Or just have our citizens and the Noah Ruze homeowners pay for it? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kathy Lee, followed by Lynn Wheat.
Good evening, mayor and council members. After reading the analysis of 9.4, I have several questions and concerns. As a general law city, our city manager, who makes approximately $420,000 with benefits calculated into this equation, does most of the work for the city, thus his enormous pay. A general law city like ours employs the mayor and the council to simply put the city manager's words into action. The council does not do all this research, they don't hire and fire staff generally, they only approve or deny the manager's wishes and wants. The analysis is incomplete in that it does not include additional monies paid to the council, such as your benefits and your pension contribution, travel and meal podiums. Additionally, if the council is on a commission or a committee, they get additional pay for each meeting they attend. The total compensation package for our mayor is $43,000 a year, and for the council members, it's $24,000 a year. Currently, the mayor and council receive a stated amount of $800 per month, but that does not include all the extra monies for the boards and commissions and the retirement and all the other stuff that goes into that. I think the 800 is really a starting point for compensation, not the ending amount. To date, that is yearly a minimum of $9,600. If the full amount of possible compensation is approved, and let's be real here, it's no doubt that you will give yourself this raise. The council's compensation will start at $2,550 per month, which calculates to approximately $30,600 per year for a part-time job, a job that generally just approves whatever the staff recommends based on the city manager and the city attorney. 30,000, 30,600 seems like an awful lot of money for a rubber stamp type of job. To state the obvious, if these council members and mayors do not like the job or aren't happy with the compensation they receive, their options would be to step down or choose not to run again. Remember, you all chose this public service opportunity to serve the public. No public service job will make you rich, it's not the purpose or intent. If you want to make money, you're in the wrong profession. If you want to help, though, our community, if you want to give back, if you want to support those less fortunate, you run for office and you make a difference, you don't make a stink about the compensation package. I don't object to a reasonable bump in compensation. I would ask that the council carefully consider a more reasonable compensation increase, something like 5% to 6% for the first year, and then we can bring it back every year for another 5% or 6%. Reasonable and in line with the amounts that other public service workers receive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lynn Wheat, followed by Savannah Brown.
Good evening, my name's Lynn Wheat. First of all, I never thought serving as a mayor or city council was supposed to be a job. I thought it was a service that you volunteered for. So to be paid has become a job, but when did we all get to assess the job you're doing, the taxpayers who are paying these subsidies that you get? I don't know that I give you one when you said that we have to raise our sales tax to meet some needs of our city. Are you not managing our budget well enough so that the quality of life issues can't be addressed otherwise? Or that you're willing to put us out there with a $100 million bond for a zoo while we still are not completely addressing the needs of our people here that are looking for housing? So, I, I like charts, so I did the chart. So I'll start with our mayor because she gets the most, so I think she's special. So, the report wasn't honest, it didn't talk about the benefits. You guys actually get health benefits. We have some in our community that struggle to get health benefits. Mayor, should you choose to vote yourself a raise, when you haven't been evaluated by the taxpayers, you'll get $63,000 plus. That's more that some of our para-eds, some of our service people here in this town earn working, applying for a job, being interviewed and evaluated. City council members, you get a little bit less, you're not quite as special, but you still do really well, you get those health benefits. Remember, you volunteered for this, and for that little law to say that we want to raise this to give people opportunity to run for office because then they would have a big enough stipend, well, I don't know. Are they going to get to know the developers in the community so they can have big financial campaign funds that eliminate those that would truly like to run? So with your new salary increase, look, you'll get $43,000, again, making more than some of the service people in our community. You all chose these positions, you chose to run for office. I didn't ask you, mayor, to run, I didn't ask any of you to run. If it's too much, if it's too much to serve our community, and you're feeling like you're losing too much, then step down. Otherwise, I think you ought to set up a salary commission that evaluates each one of you, and this commission determines exactly how much of a raise you deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Savannah Brown.
I just, um, signed up to talk to, you know, tell you guys I'm thankful for the work that you guys do, and I do think that you guys deserve to have a wage that reflects the work that you guys do. I mean, I have been in Elk Grove 101, I've been part of, um, a lot of things since the only one year that I've lived here in Elk Grove, and I've met a couple of you more than once already, and that goes to, like, outside of this, and that goes to show that you guys are getting around, talking to residents, doing the work, um, around here, and I have felt very much, as a new resident too, that you guys are very approachable, I can reach out, especially, I think Mayor Bobby Singh Allen, I've, I've talked to you, like, multiple times at this point, um, and I've, I've talked to you as well, Sergio Robles, and I've talked to you also, Darren, and, and Rob Brewer. I haven't had the pleasure of speaking to you, Kevin, yet. But I did want to, like, I guess, bite back against the negativity and kind of speak into my experience and how that does not really reflect what I've been hearing so far tonight, and I do think that $43,000 or whatever is like a little bit more than I make as a part-time preschool teacher, um, that's, you know, I mean, that's, come on, like, that's, I mean, I feel like that's reasonable, um, with how much you guys are doing, and I, as someone who is, you know, conservative myself a little bit when it comes to funds, and I'm very, you know, but I do think that that is reasonable, and I know that it's not even like that you guys are asking for that much, that's just what was the change of the maximum that, that could be allowed. Give yourself some grace, and I do hope that you guys vote in your own favor and give yourself the money that you do deserve to give yourself more time to get back to our community. I think it's, I think you guys are worth it, and thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. All right, Savannah was our last speaker, so I will go ahead and close public comment, and we'll start with you, council member, Soon.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Well, I did ask for this to come back, so, um, I think it's fitting that I start off. And, you know, having been here, you know, since 2014, remembering, uh, you know, we've been dealing with, we've been dealing with this cost even through the height of inflation and everything. Look, I agree with this, the, all the speakers, actually, uh, but, you know, the point about, we're not doing this for the money, and certainly, a little over $600 a week taxable is, is not something anyone's going to get, get rich over. There's, there's, and just so people know, I mean, I, again, I'm looking, reflecting back on the comments that were made, uh, absolutely, I do like giving back to the community, I try to do that every, every chance I get. I think it's also reasonable, though, that people who volunteer, you know, the, I don't think, I don't think it's reasonable to, except people volunteer to expend a lot, a lot of their own money all the time, either, and so, I give out of the goodness of my heart, I get, I think I give way more than what even $600 would be in terms of donations to charities, supporting events, I'm giving an idea for, so the public can understand, I mean, these roles, what we want to do, we, we want to give back to the community, supporting events, giving to charities, um, and, of course, sometimes we have to have, pay for, you know, our, our dry cleaning, gasoline to, to, to get to meetings, um, buying coffee for, for folks. One of the speakers that spoke asked me to buy them hors d'oeuvres at, at one of the breweries that I bumped into or at, you know, people are always asking, and I want to give too. It's, I think this stipend is nothing is, and I, it's funny when I heard salaries, because I think about salaries as something that's, is a livable type of thing, and I, again, I agreed with another speaker, this is not something that you expect to be living off of. So, I, and, and again, also, the other comment, I think that was made, was, you know, marginal increase, and I think that, that would have been appropriate. Again, these, this number was set back since 2012, so I think had, had adjustments been made, you know, along the way, I don't, I mean, we probably would be at this, this moment anyway, so I, I appreciate that it feels like a big jump from 800 a month to, you know, to 2,500 a month, but when you look at the time that, that has passed, 12 years, that nothing has changed in spite of the record inflation that, that's happened, uh, in, when you look at the, and I say expenses, I don't know what else to call it, but, again, we all do this out of, out of the goodness of our hearts, so, I, I don't think it's a.
Let him speak, thank you.
It's okay, I don't, I don't think it's a, a whole lot to ask, um, and this is, again, for also future, future councils, because this conversation could come up again, and you could be 24 years later, you know, looking at, at $100. People hear, when I tell people, they ask, they think we, we make more than, way more than what we make, and when I tell them, no, it's, it's $800 a month taxable, um, they, they are so surprised, you know, and, again, I like it, keeping it like this in the sense that you should want to do the work. If it's a, if it's a large salary, then maybe I don't know whether you're doing it for the money or for the work, and, trust me, at $600 a week, it's not, it's not for the money. But, um, so I'll, I'll leave it at that and defer to my other colleagues, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I appreciate you, council member, Soon. I think you've, you've said and articulated the issue and the situation correctly, and, and it was well assessed. I will say that I have been serving as an elected here in Elk Grove since 2010, it is an honor and a privilege. Elk Grove is not just a place where I live, it is my home. It is my home. And I don't take my role flippantly, I take it very seriously. My job is to serve everyone whether, whether they voted for me or not, and the stipend that we receive is a stipend. I waived my benefits before I got sworn in office because I'm very cognizant that other people that do not have what I have, do not work the job that I work, make the money that I make, um, they could use some of those benefits, and we could pour that money into other programs and other things that can really help our community. So my stipend that I receive of $800 a month is a stipend that I receive, but recognizing that we have, that the city council of Elk Grove has not received an increase in their stipend, because that's what it is, it's a stipend, it's not a salary. They have not received a stipend since 2012, which was like in the middle of the recession. It shows that, um, the economy has set the table for this to be talked about, for the issue to be articulated, and for some sort of solution that could be done, because as, as the current law under SB 25, 329 says, that for this scale, this range of a city of 178,000 people, which is between 150,001 to 250,000, you can make up to a monthly stipend of $2,550. And so, I'm glad we're having this conversation because for the work that we all do, and we take our duty seriously, because we all love Elk Grove, and we all love serving, and we all love public service, and we all like being up here to be your voice. This is something that we really need to recognize, look at, analyze, but really come back and do something that is going to be fair and say, this is the job that we are doing for the community, and what we collect is what we collect, but not to be taken more seriously than that. seriously than that. It should be taken seriously because it's the taxpayers' money, but I'm working for the taxpayers, and what we're doing right now is no different at $800 than what we would have received at $2,550. Because that's the job that, that you voted us in for, is to work for you every day and to work 24 hours, seven days a week, to be available, cell phone, text, email during these four years that we are serving you in this role. And if you don't like the role that we are doing, if you don't like our job, then you vote us out. But that is the, that, that's, that is what our charge is, to serve you and to be your effective stewards.
Read answer.
My mic is off.
Okay, excellent. And next is Councilmember Spees.
This might be the day I get off a couple of Christmas card lists, but I need folks to understand that I'm looking through this, through my window and my window only. I absolutely hate this item. I don't like it because I think it's a self-serving conversation, and to sit up here and to decide what we should get is difficult for me, and I'm not comfortable with it. But nonetheless, here we are. Now, I did, I did prepare these, this before, because I have a few numbers in here, and so I apologize to you that if, if I appear to be reading, because I am. I prepared this to make sure that I got everything said that I need to say. So let me start with how I view my work on the city council. I see this as community service. It's not volunteering, it's community service. Typically, in community service, you are giving something and you get something in return. If someone is doing community service because they went to jail, they're doing community service to, you know, repay the community, right? I don't see this, obviously, as jail, I see this as, I had a great life here in Elk Grove growing up, and this is my opportunity to give back. When I do this, I give back, right? Because I'm helping those who brought me forward in those earlier years. So it's not volunteering, it's community service, but as such, some level of stipend isn't unreasonable, right? So we have a stipend. What I'm going to tell you, though, is that I find the current, the current level of stipend reasonable, and in fact, very generous. And I have some explanation, of course, for you on this. We have two types of expectations for this job. We have stuff that we're required to do, and then there's stuff that we have to do to stay elected. Two different jobs, right? The stuff we have to do is attend city council meetings, right? We have to spend time preparing for meetings. We gotta, we gotta do a couple hours before that, right? We have to attend city ad hoc meetings, like the homeless ad hocks meeting. We have to respond to emails, and we have to attend boards and committees. I'll get back to you on, on attending boards and committees here in a little bit. But the stuff that we have to do to stay elected is going to the fundraisers, the rubber chicken dinners, the, you know, of all sorts, right? Festivals, parades, parties, fundraising, all of that stuff. That's in the what we have to do to stay elected bucket. So I don't think it's fair for taxpayers to pay for stuff we need to do to stay elected, when in fact, the city already does in part, right? We aren't compensated directly for our time when we go to the Chamber of Commerce dinner or whatever, but like the Elk Grove Chamber Gala, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, Raise the Barn, Elk Grove Scholarship dinners, these seats are paid for by the city. And typically, but not always, I pay for my own admission to these events because I'm also representing my own company, okay? Which pays for my attendance at these events. So how much time do I spend on the things that I have to do? So let's do an inventory on what, again, I'm looking through my window, I'm not, I'm not putting any, anything on anybody else, I'm talking about what do I do? How much time do I spend on things that I have to do? I attend city council meetings, two meetings a month at about five hours per meeting average, and that's a little high. We don't normally do six, but every once in a while we did, so I'm being a little generous, right? Five hours per meeting average, 10 hours a month, right? I spend time preparing for the city council meetings, staff packages, agendas, reading all that. Two meetings a month at about two hours per meeting, so four hours prepping per month, okay? I'm on the homelessness ad hoc committee, that's about two hours per month. We don't meet every month, but two hours per month is about the right number. Emails, okay? Some folks get a lot of emails. I, I feel pretty efficient about my emails, and I spend about 15 minutes a day replying to emails. Why? Because I forward them off to staff for resolution, I let the experts do it, right? I, of course, follow up on it and stay in the process, but that's what staff is for, is to manage those questions about, you know, trash or, or homelessness or whatever, that, that's, that's for them to, to deal with, right? So, that's about seven and a half hours a month. If you consider 15 minutes a day, 30, 30 days within the month, that's about seven and a half hours. So altogether, I'd say I spend about 23 and a half hours a month doing the things that I have to do. So over the course of a year, that's 282 hours, okay? Other things, parking, free. If I go downtown for a, a commission meeting or whatever, parking's free, they give me the validation, it's not a big deal. As for gas, right? I live three miles from City Hall. Actually, I just work around the corner, so I'm already here. But, so, three miles one way, six miles round trip, five meetings a month, that's 30 miles per month, that's 360 a year, so 360 miles per year at the GSA reimbursement of 67 cents is about $247 a year. So, let's do some more mathing. $6,232 per year for the hourly stipend, and $247 per year in gas. That's $6,479, right? Okay, so, we're getting $9,600 gross. That's just that, for lack of a better term, as an employee compensation, right? Okay, which is the stipend that we're talking about. So, when I show, when I see my costs are of $6,479, but I'm getting paid $9,600 gross, that means I have $3,121 left over, right? I understand taxes come out of it and all of that stuff, but basically, what's that left, what I'm left with is enough to buy a new suit, a couple of shirts, and a new pair of shoes a year, right? I gotta pay for my cleaning anyway because I work, I wear these exact same clothes. Okay, but, I, I have employees, and in my everyday, I have to explain to them that it isn't just the, the hourly wage they get or the salary they get, but it's also the cost of the benefits. So let me explain some of my benefits. I get cash in lieu of medical insurance. If you choose not to take medical insurance, you get cash in lieu, which I believe, please correct me, goes into a deferred comp account, right? Which I don't, I don't get the cash in my hand, but it goes into deferred comp, right? So that's $650 a month, about $7,800 annually. And of course, Ms. Ross, if I get any of this wrong, correct me, right? Cellular phone allowance, $100 a month, that's $1,200 a year. Executive supplemental insurance, $238 a month, that's $2,760. Employer retirement contribution to CalPERS, that's $727. And of course, this $76, I don't really understand why that's getting paid to me, but the CalPERS unfunded liability, right? We can go into why, why I get that later, but, so, that's $12,563 above my stipend. That's $22,000 total for 282 hours of work. That's $78 an hour, okay? So for me, I consider that $78 an hour is extremely generous, and, and honestly, I, I don't support more. I, I'm certainly open to other people's opinions. Again, this is the window that I look through. If this item were in front of me tonight to vote, I would, I would certainly say no. But, all that said, that's, that's where I am with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spees. Councilmember Robles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Spees, for your comments, and my colleagues as well. I think, for me, this is super important when we're thinking about the future and we're talking about diversity. If you look around the region, there isn't that many young professional electeds. That's a generation that we're going to miss if we don't do this. And it's not necessarily, again, it's not about me, and one of the things that was mentioned was service. A lot of us do this for service. I got off a plane from being in the California, we, there was California, the Army National Guard had an association meeting in Detroit, a conference. I got off the plane Friday and went straight to an event that evening, and then woke up the next day and went to three other events that Saturday. It's not necessarily to say that we don't care about community, we care about our community, that's why we're here. But we also have to start looking out for the next generation. I'm looking out for the next generation. I want to make sure that there is somebody who, if they don't have enough money to get them over, like, we can look at our Forms 700, who has the financial, we can tell on this council who's, and I don't mean to put anyone on the spot, but who's wealthy and who's not. The reality is, when you run for office, you have money. That's why you don't see many young professionals running for office, that's why you don't see diverse candidates running for office, because you don't have money to, to invest in yourself. And you have to go talk to folks, and that's a different conversation, but again, when we're talking about compensation, when we're talking about a stipend, I think it's super important when you're looking for the next, future leaders who will be running. And the reality is, our city is growing, 180,000 people, almost there. We're no longer a small city, we're our second largest city in the region, and we need to start focusing and acting like, hey, we need to take responsibility of, one, our community, that's the first thing and foremost. Make sure that our staff is being taken care of, and ultimately, it's also for us to lead the way, too. So I'm in full support of this, and give it back to you, Mayor.
So this is not a vote tonight, this is just to give you direction for the next set of discussions. So I'm in support of continuing this discussion item. I think there were some excellent points made by everybody. And I appreciate that you qualify, Councilmember Spees, that it's your lens, but I also can't overlook the lens that, that my other colleagues have here as well, which is also important. I know myself, I'm spending on a minimum 30 hours a week doing council business, and that's not events. That's meeting with different businesses, prospects, I sit on a number of two-by-twos, and those take time. Not, and contrary to what somebody might have said, not every board and commission offers a stipend, that's, you know, STA, for example, library, those don't have any of that. But I think the discussion is that this is the second largest city. I know that we're not the only one that has reevaluated this. I think the city of Citrus Heights just recently did, you know, undertook this process as well. But I, you know, what's important for me is the fact that it hasn't been adjusted since 2012. I think that that is concerning. I obviously was not here in 2012, I served on another great body, the Elk Grove Unified School District, but I know Councilmember Darren Sun, you were here, and these things probably should have been looked at over the course of the last several years. Maybe they did, I can't recall if they did or didn't, and what, obviously, the vote outcome, we can assume what it was. But I can tell you this, with certainty, that 100% of the stipend that I do get gets reinvested back in the community. 100% of what I get in my stipend goes back to the community. It goes back to these, the events that I either buy my own tickets as well, I reinvest it, and I've given to the food bank, I'm just sponsoring right now $5,000 for the 50th anniversary for the food bank celebration. I go to these events, I pay my way, I contribute. I reinvest it all back in the community. But that's what I'm able to do. But I don't think, these decisions are beyond us. This is, this is also the seat, the seat of mayor, the seat of city council. So I do think that it's worthwhile to have, continue having this discussion. I do, I do see the need for an adjustment, what that looks like, I don't know just offhand, but I do think that it's an appropriate time to have a discussion about an adjustment, particularly since one has not happened. We did that for our discretionary funds, because we reinvest those into the community as well. You're looking at, I mean, what I am grateful is that we have a very generous council. We are very giving of our time. But I, you know, I know, I know, you know, if I were to ask you, Councilmember Sun, I imagine you're putting in 25 hours a week, if not more.
Oh, definitely. And, and then, you know, you, both of you mentioned, we already mentioned about the cost of, or, you know, dinners and all these things, but every time you have a meeting, you don't necessarily want the person you're meeting with to buy you lunch
Exactly.
Or to buy you coffee, so you want to pay your own way, and sometimes, and sometimes you pay, pay for theirs, so, you know, everybody does, everybody does things differently, you know, I, I just think, some people may choose not to do that, but, I mean...
Yeah, it's not, for me, it's not just, you know, the prep for the city council meetings and our boards and commissions. I get at least 100 emails a day, and I do take the time to respond to most of them, and then those that require expertise responses, I will share those with requisite staff. But I show up. I know you all show up, and we all show up in different ways, and maybe, you know, different time commitments, but I know, because I'm out there in the community and so are you, I see you out there, and that, all of those is time away from our family, time away from our friends, but it's because we believe in the work. Obviously, nobody's doing this to get rich, anything but. However, there is, there should absolutely be a consideration for what's appropriate and be reflective of 2024. We're no longer in 2012. So I'm in favor of continuing the conversation, and I would suggest that I opt for the September 25th discussion date, if that's fine.
Yeah.
Versus the earlier one.
Okay, so let me sum up where I think the council, at least a majority of them, is directing. So we would bring this back in ordinance form, so you could vote on a first read if you're so inclined on September 25th. The second read, if you pass the first read, would be on October 9th. That would, that would accommodate the timing that I talked about before. In terms of the amount of the salary, by the way, I use the term salary because that's the language of the statute, I can appreciate the, the comments from
The comments.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments from the council, but the, the language of the statute says salary, but I, I understand what you mean by stipend. But we would bring back the maximum amount of $2,550. Now, of course, if you wanted to do something less, you could do that, but that would give you some flexibility. So what I would propose is we'll bring back an ordinance for first read on September 25th with the $2,550 salary. The council can then further the discussion and make any decisions you'd like at that time.
That sounds great. Any concerns with that?
No, I concur.
That they work for?
That's good.
Yes, that's good. All right, thank you. We will move on to our next item, which is our council comments, reports, and future agenda items. And I'll start with Councilmember Robles, anything to report?
Nothing to report, but I just want to, again, talk about the Sacramento Metro Air Quality District for the incentives program. If you go to airquality.org and go under the incentive programs, you'll find the clean, clean cars for all, and then also the community share program, and as well as if you're a resident, a commercial license holder and wants to share, wants to go from gas to EV, you can do that as well.
Excellent. Councilmember Spees?
No, thank you, I'm good.
Vice Mayor?
Last Thursday, Sacramento Public Library Joint Powers Board met. Pretty much some light, just, just a lot of light work, lots, update on the Colonial Heights Library that caught fire, and what's being done to take care of the, of the, of the community in, in response to that fire and how it's affecting that community adversely. Also, Sacramento Regional Transit Board met yesterday, we touched on some of those things yesterday, today, especially in the context of, of the ride share program that they're talking about doing and what that entails.
Thank you. Councilmember Sun?
I'll wait for him to report, thank you.
All right, then...
Madam Mayor, if I can just add one thing?
Yes, please.
There will be an event at CalExpo at nine, for 9/11. It will be from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m., so please come and be with us, and let, let us remember those who passed away.
Thank you, and thank you for that reminder. SACRT, other than that, that is, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 8:49 p.m. Thank you, and have a pleasant evening.